All right, everybody, it is two o'clock. So we're going to start the town council work session for the town of Breckenridge on September 12th, 2023. We begin with planning commission decisions. Planning department. Any questions for any?
Mayor, I have a couple of things I just wanted to ask where.
Please.
Standing on a call up, but at the same time, just was curious if we go through the period of significance. I is 1942. And go ahead. Oh, I'm referring to.
One fourteen.
Yes, one fourteen, South Main.
Coming up in a, oh, okay, yes. Sorry. Yes, absolutely.
Great. So on one fourteen, South Main, I believe the period of significance for historic buildings is 1942. And I think in the in the memo, we had something that was talking about it being or in the packet that it was in the 1940s that this went up. Have you worked with Breck history as far as kind of having an idea of if this is in fact historic or not?
So. Good afternoon, Sarah Crum, planner three for the record. When R M U took over that space back in 2016, I think it was, or 2017. There was extensive research done at that time on the existing building that's there. It was originally constructed in 1946 and it was a telephone building. But since then, it has had extensive renovations in the seventies and eighties. Different modules were added. And the original historic fabric was completely enclosed and none of that is what's on the exterior now. So it was determined in 2016 that the building that's there now is not historic.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
And moving to parking. When the three electric vehicles, perennals, if you will, will those be exclusively E V? And we're in what I'm getting at is will that take away from parking for non-electric vehicles for that spot?
Um, we don't look at parking versus E V versus not E V. It's the number of spaces required is the number of spaces required. And if you go above and beyond the code to install E V chargers at this time, they would still count for your total required parking. It's up to the business owner at that time if they want to make them exclusively for E V, whether, you know, if their staff or clientele has that demand, I would say.
Sorry, I guess I'm just wondering if the code is slightly behind technology in the fact that a lot of, I believe, most electric vehicle spots are prohibit gas vehicles to be there. And so if we have eight parking spots behind the behind the building and three of them are E Vs, so that they can get the plus three points, does that decrease the number of spots technically?
Yeah, the only way you could enforce that is if the signs, if you had signage that specified it was electric vehicle only parking. Now, most people. Most people won't park there because there's the assumption that's only for electric vehicle, but you could not enforce that on private property without the proper signage to make it clear that it was electric vehicle only. Cause we have seen vehicles, I've even seen vehicles at the rec center that are not electric every now and then, but ninety nine point nine percent of the time, most people aren't going to park there. They assume it's for electric vehicles.
Precisely. And so does that affect the number of true spots there are if?
That's a, that's, I mean, that's a really a policy question that we have to look at. And and see if our code addresses that. I don't think it's specific to this, this particular development, but it's going to be. Right now, what I'm hearing for Sarah is we don't break it down. If it's ten spaces on private property that's required and an owner wants to make three of those, put an electric vehicle, our code isn't going to just, isn't going to say yay or nay either one. That's their preference on managing that because they're still parking the public. But the reality is they won't get used for general parking as much. So.
Uh, land use standpoint, I don't know that we would want to require additional spaces on top of the E V just from a that increases the amount of impervious surface and a higher value of land use could be made than parking.
Though while we're in this interim phase between gas and electric, there should be a condition of approval with these type of. And talk to the planning commission about it, but a condition of approval of that those spaces cannot just be for E V. They have to be open to the public. If they're getting credit for those spaces is open to the public, even though they're getting credit for those E V being open to the public. They can't limit them to just E V. Does that satisfy your?
Yeah, I guess it was just a curiosity as these two worlds meet in our old code with new technology and then, you know, and just being devil's advocate to what you said, which I happen to agree with, is does that diminish the value of the vehicle? E V charger if anyone can park there. And so I just, I was hoping that we could flush that out at some point with planning to see kind of where that goes. Lastly, I had just a question on twenty four A, which I think the proposed building is fifty six hundred or fifty six hundred square feet where the current building is seventeen hundred square feet. So in in the notes, it said that their twenty four A doesn't apply because the same number of employees might be used. How is the, is the second floor that is the extra four thousand square feet? Is that not being used for commercial purposes?
Actually, what's the calculation that's driving that equivalence is currently they have about twenty seven hundred square feet of exterior food and beverage service area in the garden that's outside. So they're going to get credit for that area as food and beverage service on the exterior. So that's roughly five point one required employees to mitigate per thousand square feet. So that is what's actually driving the offset. So they're getting credit for that space. And then the seventeen hundred square foot building, which is partially retail and partially bar restaurant space. And then the new building, all three floors and or two floors and the rooftop deck will count towards employee mitigation that's required. It just happened that they offset each other because of that large exterior food and beverage space that exists currently.
And what was that number?
Jay, I'm sorry, are we getting close to wanting to call this thing up?
Twenty seven thirty six, twenty seven hundred thirty six square feet. And.
I'm satisfied.
Yeah. So what will happen? I'm not going to talk about this particular development, but any, any type of development that where we look at twenty four A regarding employee mitigation based on what is presented as part and approved as part of a development agreement. And how that's carried into the future. If if five years from now, we see a different use of a space than what was originally approved. Mark assures me that is considered a change of use of a space and that would require a development permit, which then would initiate a new employee mitigation because it's approved based on a plan, any business, I'm not talking about any business. How we're going to, how we intend to use that. If that use changes in the future and they're using a different, it requires a change through common depth. So that's how we guard that into the future.
I guess I. It is a change of use because it's going from retail, partially retail to rest fully restaurant bar with twenty seven hundred and thirty six square feet at five point one employees.
So Jay, but here, here's where Eric was questioning this. I think in if we're questioning the application of the code and and we don't, and we're questioning how that code was applied or was it applied correctly, then we would do a call.
Can I just give an explanation of how the calculations were made? Yeah. So each of.
Hold on a minute.
Okay. I think we need to decide first if we're calling it up. And if the decision is that nobody is, then I think it's fine to go into more detail. But if there is a chance.
Well, I do have some questions about the rooftop deck. And where we ended up with that, because I thought we, with the last rooftop deck, we had done something, but maybe we didn't. I can't remember.
So we did, we ended up doing that exterior loudspeakers ordinance is.
That's all we did.
Yeah.
Well, and we, and we count employee mitigation on outdoor basis, different than.
Well, I'm talking more about disturbance because now you're going to have two rooftop decks right next to each other. And there was a room full of people here against the last rooftop deck. Yeah. Now we're going to have a second rooftop deck and I just don't, this one's just, nobody's going to say anything about it. So I'm just, I couldn't remember what we ended up doing. But we did make them do their parapet walls higher too, right?
Yes. I remember.
I mean, I, I think we did some other stuff.
I don't know if that was required in the code, but we did ask them to make them higher. From the other bit, I, I mean, if we're talking in generalities right now, that there's nothing in the code that would prohibit. Like we didn't want anything to deal with proximity of other existing rooftops or anything like that. So. But we end up potentially with two side by side.
Well, we were, I'm still unclear on twenty four A, you know, where Jay was headed.
Well, then if you call this up, honestly, I think we should call it up and have a full blown discussion about both employee mitigation and the rooftop deck piece, just instead of just walking around this. And we'll see, we'll see tonight and then hopefully we'll have the votes to. You won't appear, so you'll be cool with it.
What is that?
I'll be at the next meeting.
Oh.
Any other questions?
One other question to Janet's comment about losing lots of historic sheds. Are there any next steps there? Are we going to take inventory or trying?
Yeah, thanks Carol. Yeah, we're, we're actively, Ellie from our office is taking a look at an inventory. Kind of walk in alleyways and that to inventory where we have sheds in the rear where they mainly are and seeing which of them, if any, are in imminent danger of collapse. We know there's a couple just going around and taking a quick look. And so, yeah, the next step I think would then be to come and spend some time with you guys. Once we know that in terms of what are our options moving forward? We could obviously contact the landowner, let them know what's happening. They may or not be agreeable to doing anything. But we do have limitations in terms of being able to enforce, you know, keeping those things standing. So.
We talked about that today and we'll get that on a future work session. Once we get some data and have some options, whether it's a maybe a cost share that's important to us, depending on upon the location or look for grant opportunities or different ways that we might incentivize. Uh, if if that, if that's a priority for the council to try to maintain those historic sheds.
I think we should.
Yeah, I think so too.
We'll bring it, we'll bring it to you. We want to, we'll do a little homework.
And the one thing I'll just mention is because we're going to look at a couple of landmarkings in a minute. Is it landmark property? We've got more teeth to require the property owner to stabilize structures like that. So that's one of the benefits of having a landmarked property, but we only have twenty or thirty of them in the town right now.
Only, that's pretty good.
For one fourteen, so one fourteen for the Briar Rose, two oh three Briar Rose. Is the two A South property, what's the size of that building? Do we know?
It's like right around twenty twenty five hundred, but then there's a bonus for A D U on it. So I think it ends up being around twenty eight or something like that. And this is an active application, so we can't get into too many details.
Right, right. No, no, I'm just, I can't.
Yeah.
Couldn't remember with the lot split, what the breakdown was. So.
It was roughly twenty five hundred per, but then they got a bonus for the A D U on the southern unit.
Twenty five hundred per, but the one side was one side was twenty five hundred, the other side was like twenty.
I think it was a little more than that. Because they got a mass bonus, a bonus for the A D U. We can get that information for you.
So this one has an A D U on it?
No, the one that was, it was reviewed the other night.
So this one though, is this unlimited or is this?
It's like limited, I believe at twenty five hundred or a little less than that.
So why is this thirty two hundred?
Because there's a, I believe the mass bonus is allowed for the garage.
I thought we got rid of mass.
But that this application. I'll have to double check.
You checked that.
The development agreement, not.
Oh, yeah, it was under the development agreement. Thank you, Sarah.
Okay.
So, yeah, the development agreement authorized it. So even though you guys changed your mass policy, we still have to go by the development agreement because that vested it for sixteen years.
We should have started at one.
The questions. He told me this meeting was chock full of questions. So, all right, legislative review. This will be how residents local landmarking, second reading. Questions for Mark? No Casey resident, second reading. Net zero density code amendment. Did you put in what Dick was asking for? Really the question.
Make it so that it achieves net zero. Yes. And so that was the only change made from after the work session previously. And this is again, a code amendment to update the density calculations for net zero properties, allowing them to omit the interior wall section as measured from the midpoint to the exterior from their density calculations. So we don't penalize projects for achieving net zero.
Right. Good, good, good.
Yeah.
All right. Managers report public projects update. Just like that.
Boom. Well, you didn't get Jay any chance to.
No, I didn't. I caught him. Were you eating a banana? Totally moved through why he was chewing.
And counsel. Got a few projects in there on the memo. The dam is nearly completed. As well as the landscaping along the river has been looking great. I can take any other questions that you might have.
Both look amazing.
Yeah.
Shannon.
Jay.
Is this?
Eating the banana too.
He can eat and talk at the same time. He's like a ventriloquist.
Um, is this an appropriate time to talk about the C I P at all?
Yeah.
No. That's.
Easy question.
Yes.
Seven hour later for C I P.
What is our threshold with the various HOAs like Christie Heights, a couple of other were mentioned. And actually I've heard from some Christie Heights residents that they're interested in bringing fiber. I know we're talking about that, but is there a certain like percentage of homeowners that are interested before we move forward with that?
That's upset.
Reached out to Christie Heights and we have fiber on the backside at Ski Hill Road, but we're not on the inside. So we're happy to hook up anyone who's along Ski Ho.
Okay.
Yeah. Next year, hopefully we'll get to the interior.
What is the threshold? Is it making sure like X percentage are interested or are, is there one yet?
No technical threshold. I'm looking for fifty percent.
And that's part of what I think when we get to C I P and you have those discussions. What does it cost? And does it make sense based on the numbers? That's where you have to start being more strategic on this because it's a lot of money. Are we ready to go if there were to be a development on peak eight? That we can force, ask them to be part of the ALO family?
Yeah, there, there is conduit right now all the way up to the base of peak seven. So it's, it'll be available at the end of September for anyone in that area who wants fiber.
But Jeffrey, I guess to your specific point about a new development there, B G V has a, you know, they have a lot of properties. So they have a more complex system and they would want to get all of their buildings on the same system and not have them split up. So I think Kristen has got a meeting scheduled with them to talk about what's possible. And then, you know, we'll see if we can, can get to at least one or two of their buildings that are not on that primary route for fiber right now.
Okay, and they, they know the value. I'm a connoisseur of high speed downloads. So they know the value of.
I think they're very interested in fiber. It's just a matter of working through all the details.
Don't say anymore.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Us mobility.
Mobility.
Music either.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Two updates to the packet, one with Oktoberfest this weekend. We are going to run the trolley. It will be the Ridge and French Street Trolley this weekend. So we'll still get people between the ice rink and transit center. So that'll be a good service offering. And then the other one is the obvious blue route that we're hearing about pretty publicly at the moment. So I did start today reaching out to anyone that's reached out to me to set up some meetings, hopefully in the next week to kind of hear out what the concerns are. And also, you know, let them know we are, we are interested in everybody's best interest here. So I'm working through that process, getting some more information to see what we can come to terms on that. So beyond that, I'm open to questions.
Uh, I'm in the blue road. I mean, is it? Um, are we flexible at all?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
When will we have that discussion?
Uh, my hope is that I can get at least the first one next Monday. That's what I've reached out and asked. So I'm hoping.
Think Eric's talking about what if any changes would we, are we willing or would we be looking at relative to what? What we approve with the change of the use of the blue out. So we have followed up with him based on our, our talk this morning to see if there's if we have any room with the brown to potentially do something. He hasn't had time yet to sit down and you know, look at that and see if there's anything we could do to try to address those concerns. So let us do that and give you an update.
Thanks, man.
And I know somewhere in the pack you talked to or somewhere I read that we're going to be kind of doing an analysis on the e-bike program and recommendations moving forward in in October, I believe. If there, there's been multiple council, persons that have asked for like fat bike information. Would you please be able to get any information you can for that meeting of perhaps having a winter programming available and what that would look like, cost feasibility?
Sure. Yeah, we can kind of look into that. Absolutely. I think that we're planning to come back next meeting with the Brekkie ride. So we'll see what we can do with the idea of a winter service if it's feasible.
Thank you. Give a sense like, you know, it's taken, it's still really successful, but it has to take a bit of a downturn in the last, you know, couple of weeks. Do you think that's just the weather?
Few different things going on, weather and then the N R O musicians left the second week of August. I think that had, had an impact. Kids going back to school. I think there's a few different things going on there. But also the weather is definitely impacting it.
Yeah, it's still good numbers though.
Yeah, yeah, it's great.
I do. When we have this discussion, the one thing I'm interested in talking about is changing that seventy four to twenty six percent mix and seeing if we can skew that more towards the local pass membership.
Yeah.
Eddie's been working hard on kind of a pricing structure that I think will, will help us get to that goal.
Great. Anything else? Thank you. Uh, sustainability. Earlier, I heard the podcast added Breckenridge to the pay as you throw podcast advertisement that I complained about like six months ago. It's now Breckenridge and Frisco.
Oh, perfect.
Thumbs up.
Somebody hurt you.
Yeah.
Um, it was a long memo, mayor and council. Good afternoon. Long memo here. A lot happened at the end of August. But all mostly good news. So I'm here to answer any questions and I don't have any other updates other than what was contained in the memo. So happy to answer your question.
Anyone? Jay?
Yes. Why not? I told you. On the toolkit, the business toolkit, and it's not pulling up right now. I, I felt like it was very illustrative, very easy to read. On there, there's one portion that has like, okay, and it has Mountain Dew. Plastic bottle and then prohibited it had a water bottle. And in, in the description, it talks about if it's a specific number, you know, plastic, it can be recycled and it's acceptable. If it's not, then it's not acceptable. And I just wonder with having a plastic pollution ordinance. Is that necessary to put out that like that green Mountain Dew container is okay? And maybe would it be behoove us to eliminate that just to kind of bring down confusion on what's okay and what's not? You know what I'm referring to?
Well, I, I don't exactly. And mine's not pulling up either. So our link may be in our blog.
Where is that, Jay? The old kitty.
In another video.
Aiden.
We go. Um, okay. So yeah, so we're talking about allowing plastic, other plastic beverage containers that are number one P E T plastic, but we prohibit water bottles. I would hesitate to change that because that's factually correct. That's what we have prohibited and what we still allow in recycling. And I think it circles back to the original conversation when we were looking at plastic beverage bottle bans and, and we landed on water only. So I, I do think this is factually correct. Now, could it be confusing? Absolutely. But businesses are still able to carry plastic soda bottles and they are still recyclable and are recycling. So.
I think while that's true, Jay has a good point to some degree about optics and the message we're pushing out. So maybe within this tool toolkit, which is quite comprehensive and gives the why, I can see the reasoning for that. One other thing you mentioned that you're still working on having that specific list of products that we know distributors care, carry. And I think from that being a resource for businesses, well, this is great for the why and everything and dumbs things down. Ultimately. People care, what can I get and how much it's going to cost? I think that piece of supplemental information will be really valuable.
And we, I know that that's taken longer than it feels like it ought to have. But we are working with the distributors right now based on their Denver availability of these products to populate a list instead of just coming up with everything that they have through their website. So we are really trying to focus it in on what's available here in our region. We've had really good success with Shamrock and Cisco. Websteron, I don't think we're going to get very far. They've, they've told us a couple of different ways and times that we need to just filter on their website. And then we still need to meet with U S foods and what chefs want are the other two on that list. So we have not been able to connect with them yet.
I guess now that I was actually able to pull up the, the page, it's containers for beverages. And without trying to be too picky on this, but the, the, that Mountain Dew, you know, twelve ounce bottle is on the best choice side of the range. And perhaps even if you were to, if you're trying to be factual, can we move it under landfill below plastic coated papers so that it's on the worst choice of the spectrum?
I see what you're saying. Yes, we can do that. Yeah. So we're still showing it as recyclable, but you need, you should choose a better option. Okay.
Yeah, I don't know. And just because it's just hard because, you know, we, you have to click through to get to this and then you click through to see, to check the recycling guidelines to determine which plastics are recyclable. And it's still on the the positive side of the spectrum. And I guess it's semantics, but.
No, I, I know. I understand what you're saying. And this just, I'm slightly snickering because this has been the challenge of recycling forever. And I, if I could make it more simple, I would. But no, I understand what you're saying and we can work on that. I will just want to give a shout out to Eco Cycle out of Boulder. I will just wanna give a shout out to EcoCycle out of Boulder that did help us with this toolkit tremendously. They were building one for the entire state and we said, well, we're ahead of the state. We'd really appreciate it if you could make one for us. And so we've gone through it a couple of different ways and to make sure that it's meeting our guidelines. Um, but that's certainly something that we didn't, we didn't consider when we did it. So we'll circle back with them. Yeah.
Jesse, does the fiber products that go in the landfill, do they degrade faster than other things or it's?
Everything that's in the landfill gets compacted and it's an anaerobic environment. So even though things are labeled as biodegradable or, you know, whatever, there's a whole host of ways that things are labeled. The reality of a landfill is that it doesn't have the oxygen in the system that those products need to do the job that they were designed to do. So things that end up in the landfill landfill. And it doesn't really matter. I mean, yes, paper will eventually break down faster.
Okay.
But it, it's not, it's not breaking down the way that they are manufactured to do.
Is there any future way that's gonna happen at our landfill?
So I know that the scrap is working right now with garbage gurus because garbage gurus is offering to pilot a residential curbside food scrap program. But they are, they have been fairly insistent that people will not participate in that program unless more things are allowed in there. Um, so I don't want to say yes or no, but that they are exploring it, whereas before it was a pretty hard no.
So is it a hard no because there's a cost to it or is it a hard no because you can't do it?
It's a hard no because the compost at the end of the day that the landfill is selling back to the community at a ridiculously cheap cost. By the way, you should all be putting it on your gardens, but, um, it's full of plastic. So it's not working, it's full of plastic.
I guess that's not what I'm saying.
Oh.
What I'm getting at is compostable containers.
Yep.
Will there be a day where the scrap can handle that stuff?
I think if.
Is it a money or is it a environment?
If they accept that material, I believe the outcome will be the same as our, as our previous experience. And that is that the material will have to go through the process more than once and be screened out and then landfilled. So that the compost is a clean compost product. It's not compostable. Pla- the plastics are not composting. And so it's not a money thing on their end. It could be in the sense that they could buy a really expensive screener and like pre-screen it, but that's not achieving the goal that everyone thinks putting that material in that stream is doing.
You know, it also sort of goes against our efforts too, to try to get people not to use plastic because the amount of options that you have then as a, in food service is pretty limited. And are we getting the desire, we're not really getting the desired outcome in the end, in, you know.
I see. So in comparing the landfill outcome, which is better or different?
Well, if we could get, if we could use compostable wares in a restaurant, that would solve a lot of problems, but we can't. And that's not an end user problem, that's an our problem as the, as the sustainability coordinators for the count, for the community. And that, I don't, I just, I don't like the messaging that we have here that, you know, you, you can't, I'm sorry, you can't buy compostable stuff. It's just, I don't, I don't know why we can't. How do we get around, how do we get through that? Or we just don't? In which case, you know, some of this stuff just doesn't make any sense to me then.
So to, to get back to your compost question at the scrap, I do see, um, more of an opportunity for the fiber-based compostables than the plastic compost.
Okay.
So if you were to separate those two, the fiber, we know that napkins work. We know that other products on the fiber side work. For the scrap, it is, and really for all of us in trying to message this, not that, this, not that. I mean, it's really easy to just say food scraps. And so from that perspective, we've been able to keep it really clean. But I think operationally, there's more opportunity for the fiber-based than the plastic-based. And I think that's what you're.
I am because I want to figure out a solution to this because right now there's not enough options to solve the restaurant problem. They just don't exist. I mean, some of the stuff you've gotten through, but a lot of the stuff doesn't exist. So I don't know what we're gonna do in July when some people aren't gonna be able to do some of this stuff.
So can you specifically share like a particular product that you're trying to get?
Like a, like a four ounce plastic souffle cup, single serving plastic souffle cup. There's no real alternative.
For sauces and condiments, those are allowed.
I know, I know they're allowed.
Okay.
But we, uh, why can't we, I guess what I'm saying is we need to get to the bigger solution and I can't seem to, I can't seem, if it's a money problem and fiber is usable at the scrap, then the towns in this community needs to step up and we need to do that. If it will never happen, okay, okay, but I've not heard that it'll never happen. Years ago, we talked about a million dollar grinder that would solve this problem that then didn't work, but is it, is it a million bucks? If it's a million bucks, the towns in this county should, or should cough it up and we should get to that solution because without going to that solution, we still got this one big chunk that is the antith- antithesis of the program.
And then it is cost and not environment.
That's right. And if it's cost, we can get through cost.
Well, and I, I think that there's easier, the cost issue is, um, it shouldn't fall on the towns either. They have enough funding under one A to be moving forward on some of those things. Pallet grinder is another example of what they're looking at, but that fund has not been spent as quickly as we'd like to see it in terms of new programs.
Okay, so we have to lean on the county.
Or whoever, yeah, the B O C C.
Yeah, why are you looking at me? Don't look, don't look at me.
The, uh, the approach.
Mr. Frisco, the county council cooperating.
Water bottles right after you. You're taking more heat.
I can't imagine what she's like. Be nice here.
Oh, yeah, it should be like Jade, but.
But worse.
Yeah, but worse.
Let's carry her.
Any other questions? That toolkit for you, Jay.
Good speakers for the M T twenty thirty.
Yeah, Governor Jay Inslee will be speaking headlining with Patagonia.
He a governor of.
Oregon, uh, Washington.
Oh, cool.
He's cool.
They've got, uh, former, um, Governor Ritter is gonna be talking about the clean energy economy. Um, and some, they're trickling out, but they're teasing all the speakers right now. So Raleigh Williams is coming back as the M C. Registration is open, so sign up.
Great. And Ritter is awesome. I've heard him before. He's fantastic.
Yeah.
Um, hey, I just wanna say you guys have done an amazing job on this. I know this is complex and difficult and, but really awesome job. Thank you. Thanks, Hayden.
For this too. Yeah, he's great. I appreciate it. All right, thanks.
Hey, housing and childcare update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We do not have any minutes or memos in your packet, but we did have a housing work group meeting today. Those minutes will be in your next packet. And our next childcare meeting is actually not until November. Um, but Melanie had some information on, um, stables. So the good news is that we will not see a full closure to Wellington Road at all this year. Um, we will see a slight delay, probably two to three days from Excel crossing the road, getting, um, getting power into, uh, stables. However, the, we have been, had good conversations with Excel and the, if you remember the blue route, um, that went through the Stilson property is looking like the way we're gonna be able to go.
Sweet.
Um, that work will be done this fall and then we'll probably stop before connecting to Wellington Road. We'll delay that till the spring. Um, we still need to do some locates to figure out where the current utilities are, um, to bring that down Wellington Road and connect into Corkscrew.
So there'll be, there'll be no closures this fall, but there might be some in the spring.
There will be, um, I, I won't say it's a closure, but there will be down to one lane.
If you could do it after.
April.
The river is the big.
Yeah.
Even the closure that bothered me was the, it was the river.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. It's cool.
Other questions?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for that. Great job. Uh, committee reports, there was only
Couple of things in there, so.
Us, summit stage in social equity, any questions? All right, events. Questions on events committee memo?
I don't know for, a question for Kelly or for you, John, at the beginning of the minutes there. It talks about how TJ was concerned about us losing some events and I wonder if he expanded on that because I think we've maintained all our signature events or what his concern was.
Yeah, per- perfect timing. He just left my office fifteen minutes ago. So, uh, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. So TJ and I, um, discussed, he voiced some concerns from the Breckenridge Restaurant Association that we had lost some of these flagship events. And what he talked about was Dutor. Um, the, more specifically, the street section, the Friday night, if you guys remember the scaffolding that went down.
Had that in years, right? When was the last time we had that?
Nineteen, eighteen, somewhere in there. Uh, Kingdom Days, which was a BTO, if you guys remember the outhouse races. Um, so we put our heads together and we, we talked about some, some options that we could do. Um, you know, Breck Bike Week was something that has, has gone away. Uh, so one thing we, we talked about was, uh, maybe partnering with the Epic and something the recreation department could do, the Bike to Work Day, um, along with the Epic, maybe a mayor's ride with, um, a wine after the fact, just really. Blow those things out. And then the outside, what's that?
During.
During, yeah. Um, and then some outside entities, you know, Spartan Race came, I think that was six, seven years ago at this point. But maybe just being open, um, to some of those outside organizations if they do approach the town of Breckenridge.
Are we concerned that we have too few events?
No, I think it was just making sure Breckenridge stays fun was, was the, uh.
And I think he was really interested in looking at the events that we do have and making sure that people stay in town longer. Like he brought up again, the Fourth of July parade and how everyone was, you know, was mobbed and you couldn't go anywhere and then it just evacuated. So I think he was just really interested in looking at we, what we do have and what's coming in and making sure that people, people are in town and encouraged to stay in town.
I think the other one that, uh, we talked about a lot in the Restaurant Association meeting was the Spartan races and about how it's just a different field that you're bringing athletes into town that is a Restaurant Association meeting, that are hungry and going out and not. Um, it's not, there's an event that they're here for and how that was a really big loss and.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I think.
Destination event.
Was big.
Yeah.
That was a great event, but that's the scary.
Yeah, as I say, that, that impacted the scary and not really the, the town trails either, so it's nice.
So I think, uh, TJ and I, along with the restaurant, Breckenridge Restaurant Association, will continue those conversations and, and I will reach to Tamara about increasing, um, the animation post parade for, uh, Fourth of, Fourth of July. I think it's something that Brett Create could, uh, could help out significantly.
Think about that winter thing we're doing, it's kind of like a winter spark almost, right?
Really good venue for him to come and talk about all those. So it made sense and it was good use of his time to talk about that with the events committee.
If we could do a rail jam in town in the winter.
Yeah.
On our own or bring in a, you know, somebody to put that together, I'd totally support that. You know, we relied on the scary for some of that stuff, but, you know, that was a great event.
Hmm.
The one as part of Dutor.
Yeah, the one that was right down, absolutely, right down Washington.
Yep.
You know, I don't know what the right place to kind of evaluate that strategy is, but I think, I think it's worth looking at as like, yeah, what are we trying to accomplish? What's the strategy there? Is it, is it within the events committee? How does B C A help layer in there? You know, I think about like the amphitheater kind of going quiet here with the weather changing and what are we trying to do with the, the Riverwalk Center? It's like, what is our arts gonna do and when is that gonna, you know, how does that help our competitive advantage and help the Restaurant Association? And what do we want that to look like? I think we gotta, we gotta assess that.
And I agree about the Fourth of July thing. I think we need more activation on the street after the parade. We used to have it.
Used to water fights and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, so. All right, anything else?
Thank you.
John, thank you. Alrighty, town attorney update? I get nothing. Water building, water bottle filling station update?
All right, good afternoon, Mayor and Town Council. I'm here to take any questions and comments regarding the memo that was part of the packet. Um, the intent here was just to, um, inform and identify kind of by map. Hopefully everyone was able to take a look at the map, the current bottle fill stations that are out in the community. And most of them are connected to, um, or as part of, I should say, town facility. Um, and we are, um, as also part of the memo, we do have, um, kind of our next one to be a freestanding one where the Schoonover Building next spring after demolition there, we're gonna do a little, um, living lab approach on that. Um, the only other clarification I have regarding the memo, there's actually two stations at the Riverwalk Center. There's one on the exterior and one on the inter- interior at the Riverwalk Center. And, um, and then I should add that we are looking to add one at Breck Theater as well. So that'll, that'll take us, um, from the current fourteen to sixteen next year. And, um, with that, I'll take any questions or thoughts about, um, other areas. And I should also just add that with some of the discussions of the Riverwalk improvements, certainly we're looking at for all opportunities to add stations in restrooms, um, as we go through that, those next, uh, planning phases of those projects, so.
I would love to see some outreach to private business.
Yeah.
To, to start installing these things in other places in town to get on the map. I don't know what that looks like. I don't know that if that's the, you know, business buys the unit. There's gotta be something with the water, with the water use or something, but I think that's the logical next step to help us get more of these out since we're doing the water bottle ban, so.
Yeah, great, great point, Eric. And, um, I actually do have calls out to, um, red, white and blue, for instance, to see if they would be interested in partnering, you know, for the north station and then also the main station in town. And, um, definitely have given some thought as to those areas to, to have partnerships with private businesses. Um, some of the areas, as you know, lend themselves a little bit better than others, but, um, yeah, I think there's a program.
I'd, I'd love to have one, honestly. We have a public restroom, so supposedly. Yeah.
Guess I'd internally bring some, uh, recommendations to, to Shannon.
Expensive, the, uh, water station?
Um, the station itself isn't that expensive and just as a, for instance, the one that we installed at Prospector Park was only about two thousand dollars all in.
Yeah.
But it had, you know, some of the, some of the additional expenses just, just tie into what you're dealing with, with your pulling water from a hard place, a harder place or cutting into walls or where you're gonna drain it and, um, certainly into your exterior. So there's other costs, but it's, you know, just talking out loud, it's, that's not the, that's not the challenge in it for sure.
How long do the filters typically last?
Um, we take a look at those, Dick, on a, on, probably on an annual basis, but we don't, we don't really. Beyond that, I don't think we've run into any issues there. The other thing that was kind of brought, as we were discussing it internally, is there are counters on these, these machines so we can kind of have a little bit of a, you know, probably not, really not statistically significant um, number of, of, uh, uses at these, but we can get an idea where some of the, some of the activity lie over some of the others. So, um, with that, we're definitely, as mentioned, always looking for opportunities to put more of them on the, out in the community and certainly based on, um, kind of where we're gonna currently, so.
Other questions?
The, what goes into having, y- you've mentioned it a couple of times, that having indoor spaces for these because obviously it's heated. What goes into putting, uh, these facilities? Kind of like at the, uh, rec center, uh, by the, um, the little playground. Um, I guess I'd be on the north side of the, you know, on the opposite side of the skate park, um, by, uh, the field. There's an exterior one. What goes into having an exterior bottle fill station? How far deep have, do you have to go down? How much more expensive is it?
You know, Jay, I don't know that I have the specific costs on that, but from, from our experience with having outdoor water uses, um, there are significant challenges with that. For instance, you know, just in. there are significant challenges with that. For instance, you know, just in terms of water lines, water lines need to be at least seven to nine feet in the ground to, to kind of prevent from freezing. If we were gonna bring, have outdoor water sources, we would, we would, we've already identified that we would have to heat that in some way. You know, much like, you know, having a heat edge on your, on your roof, if you're trying to prevent that water from freezing or some type of, you know, structure that would prevent that water line from freezing. And as, 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 um, most of you probably know, for particularly for irrigation, we're already kind of under operations to blow all those out, you know, with the changing temperatures. So, um, freezing water is obviously real here, um, kind of with the duration of our winter. But I think if we were to entertain outside ones, there would be some type of heating element or, um, you know, some, something that we need to do to prevent that from being, uh, from that water icing up.
That's a concern with systems too. Back to the system.
Anything else? All right, James, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Project review and budget discussion.
Right?
Yeah. Okay.
So before Shannon gets started with her presentation, um, I wanted to let you know, obviously, that at the, um, budget retreat, we're gonna go, Dave will go into a lot of depth, um, concerning our expenses and our revenues and where we land in all of our funds. And they're finalizing that work now, but, um, we have had the opportunity, obviously, over the last several weeks to look at a lot of those numbers. And this is, as you look at the CIP, it's probably a good opportunity to remind you that our general fund, um, is the fund that is all the operations of the town, it what keeps, what keeps everything going. Um, and the costs in that fund have increased, um, about fifty-eight point six percent, um, since twenty twenty-one. So seven point three million dollar increase.
Sixty-eight?
Fifty-eight point six.
Fifty-eight.
Um, and most of that is wage increase, um, six point one million out of the seven point three million is wages. And so, you know, you see where that's going. Um, but the flip side of that expense is that our revenue is, you know, essentially flat and that, um, we have either seen our plateau or we're going to see our plateau. And so our expenses continue to rise and our revenues are, are likely to remain fairly flat. So I just wanted to share that with you before you look at the CIP with a gentle reminder, um, that we should be really thoughtful about where we are spending. And then the other thing, uh, just up on the screen here, I apologize for not getting this into your packet. It's truly just a reminder of the capital project priorities that you identified in your spring retreat. Um, the only other item, uh, that you had clearly identified as a priority was around our youth programming, childcare type things at the rec center, which are not in capital. So, um, these are your projects that you identified. You will see them in the CIP, uh, so they're all in there in some shape or form. But I wanted to remind you of those. And then I'll just mention, uh, you know, Shannon will touch on each of the projects and, and where we've placed the funding for those. But as far as the Riverwalk Center is, um, concerned, Julia has been working on that and touching base with some of our stakeholder groups, um, that we will want to be a part of that discussion. And we have a meeting tomorrow to talk about the strategy going forward with that project. Before Shannon gets started, do you have any questions for me?
It wasn't very cheerful.
Sorry, Jeffrey. Um, all right, Shannon?
And everyone, um, if you want to flip down to the five-year capital plan summary, it's that big table that we have in the packet. Pass the memo, pass the cover page. We usually go project by project on that. There? Okay, perfect. Field renovation, that was on your list from the spring retreat. So, um, the rec staff is working hard to softball and I guess their softball baseball fields, um, converted to synthetic turf in twenty twenty-four.
Questions as we go or do you want to hold them?
Yeah, do it as you go.
Oh, project by project.
Project.
Well, this might be for Scott or Ziggy. Um, is, is, is that gonna include Doug? Uh, we talked about making it a home for the Summit High Tigers baseball team. Now that they're getting to play some more home games as the weather's maybe changing. Have we reacted, you know, are we making that, um, compliant with Chassa rules and such so that that can a, uh, a, a legitimate high school homes team for?
Short answer is yes. Um, we obviously want to turn it to turf. That's, that's the primary goal. But in doing so, we want to make sure that they, there's a bullpen requirement. There's a, well, relocatable mound requirement and height and those kinds of things. So yes, that's all part of the planning approach on this. Um, we, like, like you just said, we would love to be the home field for the high school baseball team, um, in doing this process.
Higher level youth teams or, or young adult teams as well.
Great.
I, I just think, you know, there's a large baseball community in our, in our community and, uh, to have a field that's up a notch with. Can we expect participation from the school district? No. I mean, they don't, they have such a small athletic budget, it's ridiculous in my opinion.
Currently their home, home field, if you will, is the Frisco, is the pretty small Frisco diamond. The problem with that is that they also run a lot of Nordic on there. And so the, the frozen portions of that remain frozen well past the season. So currently they don't have a home field that's Summit School District based. It's again, relying on the Frisco peninsula.
Budget is pretty dire.
Well, after talking to Dusty Downbuzz over here, I was, it's so hot either. I think some of the stuff we're talking about is not huge numbers. It's just kind of planning ahead. I mean, the turf is a huge number, but some of the ancillary things.
We're doing the turf anyway. That's a, that's a water issue for us.
Well, it's water and it's used, it, I mean, it checks a lot of positive boxes. Is that multi-sport?
Yeah, it's sort of the pain in verbal, which tends for it to be utilized by multiple teams. So yes, guess we're all over it for the home field for the.
Thanks.
And as we did highlight in the memo, um, we are recommending this, you know, from water conservation as well as expanding the season on those fields. And then we have some planning dollars for that same project in twenty twenty-four to look at the amenity space where the restrooms and the bleachers are. So we'd need to plan that and hopefully go to construction in twenty twenty-five. That is a bit of a guest number for the twenty twenty-five, um, pavilion, um, because we haven't done any of the planning yet. Any other questions there? Skate park expansion. Um, we have some planning dollars in twenty twenty-four with hopeful construction in twenty twenty-six. Moving down to open space.
Shannon, just, I, I think you're, probably everyone remembers this, but just a reminder too, that we budget for the year twenty twenty-four plus three years. So when you look at, um, anything in twenty twenty-eight doesn't have to be accounted for. We don't have to reserve those funds, but anything up to twenty twenty-seven, we have to actually budget for.
Thank you, Shannon.
Okay, next on our list are the open space projects. We have improvements to the fifteen acres on the McCain property, the open space acres to look at a beginner bike loop, some family hiking and trailhead. We're looking to do that in twenty twenty-five. Does that feel soon enough? And we just finished the landscaping, so that needs, you know, two years to start growing in. And then we could start working on the trail system and then hopefully open to the public in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven.
Cool.
And, um, the Blue River monitoring and maintenance is just follow-up work that we need to monitor out there for our Army Corps permit. Not a huge dollar spend there.
That's specifically on the McCain parcel of the Blue River?
Yep, the new project we just.
Are we gonna change the name to something?
Oh, you know what? We talked about that when we were out there with Bosak and someone from Bosak was gonna look into it.
You don't like McCain? No, I love McCain. I, I knew HO, some, some, one of the little more, somebody else wanted it, I don't know.
And we want it to be culturally sensitive to some you things and.
Yeah, they wanted to like, yeah, some sort of, uh, never mind.
Good job, Jeffrey. So if you wanna.
Tell me, tell me later, tell me later.
Follow up with Bosak on that and see, you want to rename that?
Yep.
Okay, here come all the exciting projects, public works. Um, we have dollars in there.
That's good.
We're really supposed to laugh, I know. For updating.
The sarcasm.
Drainage master plan. Um, I think I put in the memo or maybe I didn't. Hasn't been updated since the eighties, I believe.
Three years.
We, we need to do that. It's a decent, decent size, um, budget because it's gonna be a big project. Have Riverwalk Center renovations, um, you know, ComDab, Julia's taking the lead on that. We'll be pursuing grants for this work. We believe there are opportunities out there for arts grants. So there'll be more to come as that team meets.
What are next steps with that?
So we have a meeting with Julia tomorrow, Rick and I do, to talk about what her sort of strategic plan is moving forward, how we will pull in the different stakeholders, make sure Tamara is a, a big part of that project. She'll, uh, we don't know exactly what her plan is, but we'll talk to her tomorrow and then maybe we could give you an update on the twenty-sixth.
Uh, yeah. I mean, I think you all know when we said we were gonna do that, I, I said during the meeting, I thought it was important that the town leads that because the town owns that property and we kind of want to, uh, manage that, although they would be a critical partner. Um, but Tamara has some very strong feelings about what they could do with their leadership and met with Shannon and I just to propose that, and then has come to our attention that she is setting up some meetings with each of you and, uh, trying to kind of make that case. And so, um, I think, you know, we were gonna give that a little time, but also get some feedback. But, cause we wanna, you know, how that's gonna proceed, so.
I, yeah, the one group I think is important to engage is, is the BTO or, um, is the BTO. And in some sense, you know, we were so successful with the destination management plan as a, as a process for a community, um, type strategic planning. And, um, I think we could probably learn from that success in, in this process to, to make it, you know, a, a community prop. You know, a little broader than just an arts process into a community process, so.
Julia has reached out to Lucy.
Awesome.
And I wonder, I was looking at the ten million and I think, I mean, by twenty twenty-eight, that seems unlikely. He, well, um, I just wonder if it's time, I know when I first got on council, Gary Gallagher was on here and he talked sometimes about different funding streams for the arts. And I just, I mean, I feel like at least once a year, we talk about whether it's time to do something similar or try to do something similar as open space or other funding mechanisms besides just the general fund. So maybe that can be something that Julia is also exploring while she's setting up this whole next step.
He went, and is that something we'd want to consider going to Ballad Initiative or creating a whole other thing? Is that what?
I mean, I think that's one of the options. I would love to know what the options are or if we're really just gonna be on the hook for a, you know, twenty million dollar project.
What's the, what do we, we sell Paley for?
Twenty million.
Okay, any other?
Want to leave that in though? Do you want to leave the planning piece in is the question in front of us.
Yeah, I think we have to, we gotta start.
Yeah, man, I think we need to start to dive in.
And it's definitely a multi-year planning.
Right.
Project.
For sure.
We have dollars shown in one year, but it'll, it'll take a couple of years at least to really understand this project and the scope and the community input. So all those council direction. Carter Park, the drainage, dog park, bathroom renovations, um. This is a estimate of what we could spend in these two years. I think we want to start more with the exterior work with the drainage and dog park. And then do some planning on the, uh, facilities as well.
Shannon, what was the work we did a couple of years ago on Carter Park and the drainage?
Same thing.
Also the drainage.
We were, um, we did some work. We did infiltration gallery and, um, some stormwater improvements to address the runoff coming from the dog park and the possible contamination to our stormwater.
So when we're talking about this drainage would be throughout the park or more sustainable or what's?
It would be additional surface drainage to capture also to address some of the runoff that comes off the sledding hill with the amount of snow we have packed on there. That definitely does a number on the whole park system and the grass as it flows off of there. And then the drainage in the dog park itself could be better managed to help, um, how that surface wears with all the use.
Are there turf dog parks?
There are.
And that we want to like explore if, I am just saying that with what you're talking about with, uh, I look at this from a true resident need or, or desire is that those that use Carter Park, you know, whenever I go there, I know ninety percent of the people there, it's four people that live here. And the majority of the fall and the spring, it's absolutely, like, I don't, I don't know if a quarter million dollars will fix the drainage where it's not disgusting and almost untenable. Like, is this something where there is desire to look at alternatives and say, hey, this is a resident, this is a local amenity that we're doing for the people that work and live here. Let's, let's stop trying to like do a little piecemeal. Let's just do it right where it's going to be a clean sanitary environment for the town. I don't know.
I don't know. Last year we got that letter, look, asking us to look at the pea gravel.
With that, right?
We, we have started looking at design in the dog park and we looked at synthetic turf. And what we found out is it's not sanitary. Um, so the best solution would be to improve the drainage so you can get rid of all of the dog waste. So we're looking at redesigning some options to keep possibly close the southwestern part of the park where it gets all muddy in the spring and let it dry out and keep the northeastern side open. So totally redesign the fence layout, add some better swales, drainage, dog features, um, all ideas right now. And obviously we'll bring them to you as they get more solidified, but yes, we're looking at all those options.
Hey, why isn't, why isn't it sanit, why isn't astroturf sanitary? Just because it doesn't percolate down?
All just stays there.
On top of plastic.
Yeah.
All right. We do a site visit.
One letter that we had that was like, please consider pea gravel and.
Yeah, yeah, we've had a couple of meetings with the dog park group and I think she came and she was very happy to see that we're looking at some new designs.
Great, thank you.
Cool. What sort of usage do we have at Carter Park on the pavilion? Is it fifty percent like ballpark? Do we know anybody?
John's. Yeah.
Yeah.
Hundred percent also.
Is it, is there enough, two questions? Is there enough space there to expand those facilities? And would that make sense to look at a capital investment to, you know, or with that overloaded, if there's like a second pavilion somewhere on there? Is that a good use of our money to expand capacity there?
Dick? Todd, I, I, I think you're touching on something, but it, it might be a little premature because I think there's new leadership with the school district. And I'm hoping that they might collaborate and we might be able to start a discussion finally, maybe around possible shared use of, of athletic fields when they're not in session. And I think that discussion would be, be a better discussion if we got that question answered first. I think Tony is kind of a no-nonsense person if we came to him with a pragmatic approach of. Tony is kind of a no nonsense person if we came to him with a pragmatic approach of. Shared use of fields, he might finally overrule the naysayer who is still on staff.
You're talking about the facility itself, though, that we ran out, though, as opposed to.
And I, and I understand and don't disagree with Todd. I just think if we could use that other field during the summer, it might. Look different, look differently. Some kind of renovation or expansion might look differently if we had both fields.
Yeah, with a hundred percent occupancy, it's like, is it time for a second pavilion somewhere in that zone? Maybe smaller, maybe bigger, I don't know.
There's a lot of use on that, just open grass. And to your point, the sports teams, like all the rec leagues. Play on the Breckell all the time, all the time after school, so there is a lot of use. I think we would really need like a. Use pattern study to really understand if if our, if our community would benefit more from having that open space or. Um, a bigger pavilion because like, I don't want it to just be rented out by weddings all summer and then nobody can use it.
Really go on like bigger pavilion, but maybe like a second option to get, you know, just still gotta feel good, but is there?
You guys that cut some expenses in here.
I got one for you.
Excuse me.
Yeah, really. Brought it to the wrong group.
I was gonna say, should we start making snow on the sled hill, but I won't now.
Go back up the hill.
But, you know, before we, while if we ever would consider anything about a pavilion, we're gonna do a kind of a reach out to. Some of the neighbors. I've already heard a lot of kind of complaints from the people that live in, what's it, Forest Groll or. Some of the little uh condo projects, like just the noise from the pickleball crowd and the tennis crowd and, oh, you know, it's just kind of uh. I mean, some of those events, some of those things going on all day, yeah. Pickleball people are rowdy. As we look at all that hardscape, oh, sorry, as as we look at all that. As we look at all that hardscape in between the softball fields.
That's a really thoughtful way to kinda, I mean, there's a demand there for these small pavilions for local events kinda, like we're talking about with the Riverwalk. Thanks for bringing that up. I like it.
Everybody good leaving this money in? I mean, honestly, before we add another pavilion, I think the bathrooms is a big deal.
And drainage.
Well, drainage, obviously, cuz we've been talking about that forever, but the bathroom thing is really, those are.
So weird.
So weird.
They need an update.
They need a little update, yeah. Okay, McCain Access Road.
Okay, that is the road that is gonna connect Coin Valley over to Stan Miller Drive.
A good picture of it.
That's nice. Traffic study perspective, maybe this is your, your budget cutting uh line item. Uh, are the traffic loads really gonna add that much where we need to spend nine million bucks for a road?
Contract, no?
Well, it is, uh, depending on what happens with that. Ten acres is a contract, but I also. We're, we have a lot of concerns of whether or not the roundabout at Fairview could handle. Uh, a couple of things going on. Can that, once we open up, you know, we're gonna three hundred new residential units, we're gonna have the Soul Center in there. And can that roundabout handle that volume of people? That's also gonna be your, one of your primary nighttime snow storage routes that we need to access in off of. Coin in order because when you're doing thousands plural of trips. With those trucks in the uh winter, that extra distance of going up and through the roundabout and coming in and back down and then backtracking up. Makes a huge difference uh for us and so. Cool. It is, it is very much, it's a huge number. It's huge. It's hard to swallow. But it's very much needed to make that all work the way it needs to work.
Your transit solution too.
Makes sense.
On the highway.
I was just curious.
Number to swallow, but. You know, it's really gonna move that that path that needs to get safe and separate that, although the path isn't included in that price either, so.
Correct. So it's not about mitigating traffic on Highway Nine. It's about giving us access to Public Works. And the access to the school district parcel. Um, Public Works being the snow storage as Rick explained. And, you know, I probably should have talked about it a bit more with the open space plans for McCain, but if it's in here with Access Road as well is. There needs to be some direction and decisions made, um, not today, but eventually on how we wanna route that rec path. Um, we were looking at moving it away from the highway, away from the Fairview Roundabout and coming along this new road. Through the open space and connecting behind Alta Verde. So we'll, we'll work on that alongside the other open space plans and bring some options to council. So we can address it. The road is contemplating, you know, some alignments there, but we haven't funded it in this project. I think the rec path is one that we would, could be very successful with grants, connects to our housing projects.
Isn't part of the, part of the paths already done behind Alta Verde one and Alta Verde two?
Probably completed that and it just dead ends there now, Alta Verde, decide how we wanna connect it to the new underpass at Coin.
Which is important from the safety standpoint.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we wanna make sure we take a good look at that and um come up with a plan for your approval.
Everybody good with this then?
Yeah.
I'm hoping we can save some money on the bid, but we'll see. It's a big project.
Next.
Okay, another McCain project. So I, in the memo I did for the C I P I included the McCain Master Plan. And we have contemplated a regional park out there, a playground, nature park, maybe pavilion, not really sure what amenities we'd put in there. That's part of the bigger master plan we had had on the Blue River Parks. There was supposed to be a series of parks along the corridor. This one um is really nice because it's over the pond that we filled in where we shouldn't be putting any buildings. It's adjacent to Alta Verde as well as the Soul Center. Um, so we have dollars in here to start some planning.
Where is that? Where are we now? I see McCain, but property improvements and access road, okay. Okay, the numbers.
The numbers, it's called Pond Park McCain Regional Park.
Okay.
We have some planning dollars for twenty twenty five and then we have a million sitting in there for twenty twenty seven. Which would uh be the budget if we were to get a grant. A million won't build us a park. Be more like two to three, but we're hoping that we could be successful with some GoCo grants or some.
You're talking about over the pond?
Over the pond.
And Pond Park is just a working name.
Yeah, it wasn't a real exciting names. I changed to Regional Park. But if you have some ideas, we're open to suggestions.
Lost Child Park.
Yeah, Sinkhole Park, I'm not sure, but. It's import, an important piece and we're also looking at how this could flow and connect to the river amenities that um Alta Verde is looking at.
Cool.
And sort of, you know, daisy chain those in. You like it? Keep it? The next project is the Food and Beverage Delivery Center that we've been discussing. We have some planning dollars only in. Twenty twenty four to sort of narrow down locations where we could pilot this. Right, those are easy today. Another exciting project is a replacement of coffins and bridges. Exciting cuz they're so expensive.
Aren't we on fiber?
Are we on fiber?
It's different on the packet.
Wow, interesting. Okay, we are on fiber then. I have Kristen here too.
Yeah, so the past couple of years, we've done the backbone, we've done the middle mile, we've hit um Ski Hill Road this year. Gone out Airport Road, you know, we've gone up um. Uh Wellington and so this next couple of years, I'd like to finish out those neighborhoods. And get to the Weishorn and all the the roads off of Ski Hill and maybe get over to Four O'Clock Road. Kinda build out all the neighborhoods in addition to connecting all of the um institutions like the fire stations and any schools or other. Um workforce housing or town buildings. So this is our proposal for next year and um obviously open to your suggestions.
I don't know, ask her, she knows everything.
Did C M C run Allo to their new housing? They have been reaching out and so we're in in talks with them right now. Yeah.
Cool, good.
Uh, are you, are we out in City Market with fiber?
Yep.
Okay.
So. I, I wasn't on council for the original inception of fiber and. Um, I, I don't, I didn't tally up what we've spent so far, but I imagine we're in ten million plus. When we, we start talking. The fiber infrastructure is very important. I get it and I understand why we're doing it and that it's not for today. It's for tomorrow. When we're looking at these numbers of another ten million dollars over the next five years. And you look at the take rate so far of six hundred? The amount of investment per user is so devastatingly high. Is, are we at a point where before spider webbing out into these neighborhoods that we need to take a break? And put it on Allo's shoulders to. To show some resilience, to show some proactiveness, to get this take rate higher in these large concentrations of. Of people that it's currently run to. Or is, is just staying the course a hundred percent the right way to go and that we need to put blinders on? Swallow this pill and just keep going.
Yeah, it's a great question, Jay. I would love it if um everyone who had access to fiber would sign up for it. Um, you know, I think of fiber as one of those critical infrastructure pieces, like you talk about like, okay, back when they were building water mains. Oh, who really needs the water main? You know, you can get it from the well, but eventually you'll want town water. So I think that. You know, there's, there's a balancing act here. We've spent a ton of money and we can take a break if that's the direction you wanna go. And just concentrate on the drops and getting to the people who have the fiber right in the street in front of them. Um, you know, I know there's a lot of people who really want it that would be in the next couple phases. So it's, it's so difficult to figure out, you know, what, what is the right amount to spend?
I think it's a philosophical question and originally when we did this, it was never about take rate. It was about providing an infrastructure improvement and a utility for the future and that's what it was about. And the take rate was a piece of it, but it wasn't, it never, they never had to align when we talked about this originally. It was about the future of stoplights and.
Twenty, twenty plus million dollar investment in the backbone, which didn't involve one person taking it. You had to get that there. You had to have that backbone in place.
It's a big talk at the national level about rural communities and infrastructure for rural communities with, in regards to fiber. So I think that council took the plunge, decided it was the right thing to do. And while we had people in the public that came and criticized the take rate, that was never the end all be all. So to say this is fifty thousand dollars a person is not. That's, that's not, wasn't at the time and and still for me is not germane to, to what we're doing. So for me, I would say we keep pushing on and allow staff to keep pressing Allo. To, to, and if they can't do it, we find somebody else. I mean, I think that's gotta be part of it. They need to, they need to really up their collect. We had a little talk this morning about just the business piece. They need to be out there, you know, walking the streets.
It's such an easy sell and it's so much better than than any other product on the market. I don't know if we're tooting our own horn enough or. Uh, Allo doesn't toot a horn because it's, it is so much faster, so much cheaper and so much more reliable, but. And I just wonder if people know it, but.
You know, Blue River's looking to connect.
Yeah.
Well, we'll be part of that.
So I'm, I'm with Eric with this one. I say, put the blinders on and go ahead. You said that well. I, I will reiterate, I think we need to really turn up the heat on Allo. I think it's time to uh. To really let them know how important it is to see them perform and be more nimble in, in what they're offering. Well, I mean, basically the competition looks at what they're, what they're offering and then undercuts them for a short period of time and. They may need to, to look at how they're packaging and marketing, but um, but they, they really need this stuff.
Their service is excellent, their phone service is excellent. It's their sales and marketing that is weak.
Yes.
And probably that a lot of it comes in, they can't find people, can't find a place to live here that, that work there maybe, you know, I mean, the guys I talked to live in Park County.
What are we at?
They could, they could farm out some of their sales and marketing, so.
What are we at investment wise, just to get scale for Jay and I?
Around twenty seven or twenty eight million.
Twenty eight mil and that's with close to seven hundred users at the moment?
Twenty of it is backbone, as, as Rick said.
Right, sure.
Yeah, I get that.
Twenty of it, it has to be in the ground before you really can start talking about.
Yep.
Take rates.
Um, a couple, just a couple of other things. A, I one hundred percent agree on the marketing side of things. And the sales side of things and so we've been talking about that. Um, this morning, we also talked about the idea of putting together. A three to five year plan, so that's something that we can work on as well. Um. The other thing I'll, I'll kinda point out is that we did start with that really big investment in the backbone. Um, and then we did a C O P for another big chunk of money and since then. One, we entered COVID, which was just, you know, they, Allo didn't leave Nebraska like that was their. Um, sort of organizational directive is that they weren't, they had to stay put and so we really got bogged down during those. Primary years of COVID, but since then, we've been doing smaller amounts of budgeted funds that, you know, two million to three million dollars. And since Kristen has come on, things have gotten a lot better on the side of um being strategic about where we're. Building our lines and who we're trying to reach. In the last two years, we've essentially reached almost all of our affordable housing. Running north and south in particular. Um, Corey confirmed today that we will have bulk deal Allo at Alta Verde two. And so you'll see those numbers jump, eh, you know, exponentially. Once we get into um Alta Verde. We're also going to have a deal at the Justice Center. Um, we're into Pinewood two, we're getting into Pinewood two. So we're really hitting all of those um multi-dwelling units and that's what's really gonna drive those, those numbers up. And, you know, at some point when we work on this plan, we'll come back to you because again, it becomes this philosophical decision. We can get, particularly if we have some grant funding, we can get to more people in the M D U's. But then we have other segments of the town where it is really expensive to build. Like where you're looking at, say, twenty thousand dollars plus to get to each house in a particular neighborhood. Um. And that's where we've had conversation with, conversations with Allo about alternative ways to reach those neighborhoods as opposed to laying lines. Um, and we need to continue to have those discussions or we need to come back to you and say, do you want to spend three and a half or four million dollars to get? You know, a hundred and fifty houses in a, in a particular neighborhood, so um we'll work on that and then we'll, we'll come back. And present to you again.
But since there, there's no grant money available, this seems like it'd be ripe for it.
Yeah, so currently there's not, but we put in letter of intent. Um, there's a Capital Projects Fund grant that's due September twenty second. Through the Calder Broadband Office and we're gonna go in on it with uh the county and Blue River to get to all the underserved and unserved. Areas around here. Um, so that, that would be part of the twenty twenty four construction if we, if we get that grant. Um, but yeah, the Calder Broadband Office just got, I think, seven hundred and twenty six million dollars for um expanding to those underserved. And unserved areas and so we're gonna be applying for all the grants we can that we um can, that uh we qualify for. The problem is that we're not underserved and we're not unserved because almost everyone has Comcast or, or some sort of satellite service in the town. They can get twenty megabit service upload and three megabit download, then they qualify for that served. And so even if you're getting just really, really slow speeds, you, we won't get the grant because they can say, oh, you're already getting. Some sort of service there.
Can't even get email with that.
I know.
I mean, and we did have a successful Dola grant.
Yeah, we did have the Dola grant last year for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we used to get to Alta Verde.
And that was a mineral grant, so like it's, we're trying to find ways in to get funding for this project. That kinda gets around the broadband constraints.
So do we need to talk to our elected representatives? So do we need to talk to our elected representatives at the state, at the federal level about? That kind of stuff because they talked about, I mean, Hickenlooper and Bennett in particular.
Well, we met with their staff, one person that had to do with the broadband for.
And the goose.
The goose's.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, everybody good with uh that? The fiber infrastructure piece, Jay?
All right. You good?
Yeah.
Hey, um, we have dollars for twenty twenty four to finish up a design for expanding Airport Road. We need some turn lanes at those key intersections. And we will do that in concert with the um master plan that's being revised for the housing out there. Did, cause you said. So we have to go back up to Broken Lance. I think you guys lied that we're on fiber.
Lance on this, we don't.
Infrastructure improvements, culvert and bridges, subprojects, Broken Lance Bridge.
I don't have that on, what?
Of the fiber and.
Been a different one than.
Something different. Arsgo McCain, food and beverage, fiber.
They're on this.
Oh.
You're on the five year.
Never mind.
What year?
Never mind.
Okay.
Upon, there's.
I'm good.
Yeah.
Fun talk. With you the whole time.
Um, I'm confused, but we do have projects to replace the downstream bridge. At uh Unbroken Lance.
First bridge, the one by the big park.
Lower one, not the one that we had to redeck as emergency thing, but other side of.
Oh, yeah, okay.
There's some really old culverts.
Who's that imminent? Urgent.
Imminentish.
Be done in the next five years. We did push it out a year because we're pursuing grants on it.
Maybe another year?
Yeah.
It's gonna cost you the same unless we push it to twenty twenty eight.
Well, it just gives us more time to find grants. It gives us, you know.
We can talk again next year, but the roadway is also in really bad shape. We have a lot of groundwater intrusion coming off of that hillside. So the actual road surface connecting around that back loop um needs to be addressed. And we've been punting that for a really long time. We're also combining it with a water line, water main replacement. So we've coupled, you know, three of these really heavy infrastructure projects in there, so.
Yeah, it probably makes sense to do it all.
To do it and we need to do it all together and it'll be a big impact to the residents there, but it's those infrastructure projects we need to do. An option. Give it back to the county on annex.
That's an option?
No, I don't know. It'd save some money. So those are those projects there and then we can jump back down past fiber to Airport Road and then undergrounding of overhead utilities. And did this project every two years with two hundred thousand dollars. And this money combines with an excise that Excel collects. They collect one percent on all the utility bills for residents. We feel we have enough money um accumulated in this project now that we just fund it for twenty twenty four at that. Three hundred and fifty thousand, that'll leave us with one point one in that project budget. And then we wait. To fund it again until we run out of that money and have another large project that we would have to fund separately. Ice Arena entrance repairs. I don't think I've spoken to council on this project. There's heated concrete at the front entrance of the Ice Arena that is in really rough shape.
Has been for years.
Has been for years. We're gonna try to patch it up to make it through this winter. And then come in and demo that, replace it. And also try to correct some of the drainage on the circle part of the driveway. We may need an inlet and some storm sewer. So that's what this project is. Um, it's a best guess on the budget there. It could. Come in a little higher, a little lower, but once we get that figured out, we can report back if that budget needs to change. Next project is overlay and concrete replacement. We haven't determined what roads and areas we're gonna do yet in twenty twenty four. But I did match. You have one in mind, Jeffrey?
That was a inside sigh that I did outside by mistake.
How much do we do this year?
Same budget. That's where I was getting at. So we're matching the amount of work we did this year, which I think is as much as Columbine and our community can handle.
It was good though. That's a lot of, that's, that was good work this.
Yeah.
The spring.
Catching up. We have like one more downtown road we need to do. We need to hit Adams and then we can do some. Further out roads that will be impactful to everyone. Okay, after overlay, we have a new project um called ADA compliance. We don't have any budget. Accounted for it yet. Um, what's going on is we're under a townwide ADA assessment right now. And we expect, once this report is provided to us sometime in November, December, that we'll have a series of projects that need to be funded from this assessment.
Things that there's a lot.
So we'll, we'll wanna be strategic. Where do we hit first? What facilities do we want to go to? What portions of the right of way we might wanna tackle? So we just wanted to get it on council's radar that these are things that are going to need to be funded in the future.
Do you have any idea like it's, are you thinking like a million a year for five years or something? Or you don't have any idea?
As bad as that. They said that we're doing a pretty good job, but there are some things that need to get done and so. Like the front of town hall is one example, right?
Yeah.
Got some stuff. Right, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's gonna be fairly, it's gonna be dollars for years, you know, doing a little bit each year, I'm sure.
They have additional projects that are CIP type projects that need to get fixed too.
I think this is important.
Yeah, I don't think you can do anything about it.
Is what it is.
Just wanted to get that on council's radar, so we do start bringing those for approval. Um, the next group of projects we have are titled sustainability. These have, these are continued over from last year's five year CIP. We fund energy upgrades to our existing facilities, our EV charger implementation. And then a new one that was added last year is funding to address our materials management centers, both existing and new. Um, we didn't change the dollars from last year's CIP.
Did we spend them this year?
Not all of them.
And for the materials management centers, I know that that's gonna be a big amount, but are we, are we ready yet to deploy? Are we still in a planning phase for next year? And so is that too high of a dollar amount for next year? In the fact that we're probably not going to build new material management structures next year if we're not. All aligned on the river. Is that, is that the number to be in there for twenty four?
It's a placeholder number, to be honest. I mean, if you want it to look different, higher, lower. We'll be coming to you once we have a strong recommendation and a project specific budget. So. I mean, I don't know if it's the right number.
Some regard, it's um, yeah, we know they need to be built. And so, I mean, we could push. We could push it out, you know, to, you know, a million in, let's say, twenty five. Um, and it's not gonna change your budget because you're gonna reserve that money so that you know that it's something that has to get done. And we're not spending it on something else, irrespective of whether you do it. So, I mean, that's plugged in there and knowing that we have a number of these over the next five years we have to build. And so that's kind of appropriated dollars for that.
It makes me wonder how it dovetails with a food and beverage delivery center. And if that gets off the ground, is there like economies of scale and efficiency? For doing materials management with the food and delivery and. You know, I'd, I'd hate to spend two million bucks, three million bucks over the next five years and then unwind it with. The food and beverage, you know, four years out at five million.
I think they're totally separate things, though.
I think that's what we gotta figure out, right?
I, I don't ever see waste and, and food delivery being in the same. Ever, being in the same.
Maybe the system to get one there and back.
Yeah, Vale's gonna use the same system.
I can't imagine having a bunch of trash sitting in a restaurant or out back for a day while we wait for them to pick it up in the morning. I just, that's what we've gotten away with, with these. With these centers, you know what I mean? I mean, we, everybody used to have a roll off. That's how we used to handle it and we did this. So that everybody didn't have a roll off. If we're gonna go back to everybody having a roll off, that gets dumped in the morning, you know what I mean? Th- this is so staff can take stuff, it's in a centralized location. It's not an eyesore on the Riverwalk. That's the whole sort of point of the material management centers, so. I don't wanna wait on this. I wanna get these things done as fast as we can.
Do we wanna litter the Riverwalk with, when I say the Riverwalk, like the river zone with more of these structures that we then maybe need to tear out?
No, we need to replace what we have and put them in better places.
Agree, but it needs to be like efficient and. And, and I hear loud and clear what you're saying about, you know, I certainly don't want a bunch of roll offs in the back of every restaurant, but I think there's. Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're efficient and thoughtful with it, right?
Can't slow it down, though. I mean, I get that, but this is something that we've had, we've had to do this for fifteen years. This other thing's not gonna be overnight. This, this food delivery thing is gonna take a long time to roll out.
Agree. Cleaning up the river and.
Needs to be done. I mean, these things are garbage right now. They need to be fixed. So I would disagree with.
Clouding up this amazing asset that we have along the river. There's, there's trash and trash trucks along the river and like. I'm, I'm reluctant to go spend a million dollars to plop one down at the corner of Say Watson and, and the river there, right? Like. I, I think we just gotta be really targeted with, I think we need to do it, agree with you there. And I wanna be targeted with where we spend that money to make sure that we're not.
But that's why we're doing this whole plan.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what that plan's about, but that does not dovetail with the delivery plan.
Seems like it's gonna unveil.
I, I took, I disagree with that. I just don't, I don't like com- combining those two at all, so. And we'll just disagree on that, but I, I think this is a piece that we've been talking about this forever and it needs to be done. So.
It compromises, cause I agree with both of you. I mean, I think as we're doing it with urgency, as you're expressing, Eric, I think. There'll be a point where it'll make sense to touch base with the logistics folks in Vale and say. Cause they are just implementing trash as we speak and say, what have you learned? We are, we are in the process of planning these, these uh facilities. What have you learned that, that we should consider? So I think from that extent, you know, I kinda agree with both you guys.
Better.
Voice of reason. Uh, so where are we on, on this piece?
Do we approve all of these facility uh sustainability projects? Yeah.
Yes.
Energy upgrades, EV chargers, materials management. Next up is childcare and I think Shannon Haynes is gonna help me out with this one.
Take this on.
Um, so with the discussion that uh we've been having around. The other child, the new childcare centers in Summit County and what the impact will be. With those opening and the uncertainty around the waitlist. Um, Corey has a meeting uh with ECO towards the end of the month. To try to figure out a way to improve the waitlist itself and the um, the process that people use to actually get on the waitlist. It, it appears we wouldn't be building a childcare center anytime in the near future as we wait to see how things sort of pan out. So we had eight hundred and seventy five thousand dollars in the childcare budget this year for design on a new center. And we did not spend that, so we've removed that from the CIP budget and that money is in the childcare fund. Um, the other thing we had in the CIP was ten million dollars to build a facility. Um, and we ha- we don't have that in there right now. We could certainly put it in for, say, twenty twenty eight if you wanted to see it in there. But it doesn't appear we'd be moving forward with a new center anytime, say, within the next few years. Um, so one, we wanted to make sure that you all felt comfortable taking that out of the CIP. Or if you'd like to see it in as twenty twenty eight, an, an okay place to have that. Um, in addition to that, we'll talk more about this during the budget meeting. But I wanted to share with you that we have been um since twenty twenty one, I believe. We've been taking about one point two million out of the excise fund. Um, I think it was previously in the marketing fund. And we've been putting it into the childcare fund to create what Dave would term a restriction. Um, it's essentially a, you know, a reserve of funds for you to spend on the childcare center when you actually build it. So there's about four point five million dollars set aside in the childcare fund for a facility. Um, the childcare fund right now is about six point five million dollars. Um. So we have money in that fund and one of, just to give you something to think about, we, we wanna know or will want to know. Um, if you want to continue making that transfer in from excise. And if you want to continue to add to the uh restriction for a new center. So we don't need you to answer that today, but I just wanted to kind of give you that broader perspective on the childcare fund. So, you know, you can think about that. Um, and I also wanted to add that we are going to have to do some work on the Montessori school. The foundation is not. Um. It's, it's not concrete. Yes, it is not concrete. Um. Uh, working on trying to figure out what it's gonna cost us to lift up that building and put a new foundation in. And then we'll, you know, figure out if, what, if any additional improvements uh you all wanna make to that building. So there is that expense on the horizon. We just don't know what it is yet. So. My question for you today, though, and Shannon's question for you today, are you okay with the fact that we've removed the eight hundred and seventy five thousand dollars? And designed money? And are you okay keeping um funding for a new facility out of the CIP for right now?
Okay.
Yes, yes.
I appreciate it. Um, I feel comfortable removing the design uh eight hundred and seventy five thousand. From and not pushing that into twenty four. Um, with there being so much uncertainty on needs, the effect of the Wintergreen Center. Not having accurate waitlist numbers. I personally would like to see it still in twenty twenty eight, the ten million. So that it continues to be a line item that we continue to have conversations about. And hopefully get to a better number where we know what the needs assessment's going to be moving forward. And, and so that it is a topic of discussion because I think that while right now the executive directors of all these care centers. Uh, believe that if another center came online this year, that that would be extremely detrimental. To the viability of their businesses and with UPK and the rollout there. I, I have a feeling that would I still find that um the infant toddler population is I still be underserved. Uh, I have no, no one knows what the actual numbers are gonna be. And I think that I would love to continue the conversation of what does that look like when we have some accurate numbers? Um, is it an expansion on Little Red? Is it, what is it? And, cause perhaps it will have to be a new center, which I think is not ideal if the numbers aren't large. But if we do finally get back and we see that, all right, yeah, it's not six hundred and eighty kids on the waitlist, but it's five hundred and fifty. Versus something south of two hun- or a hundred or whatever it might be. I just wanna keep having the conversation.
Twenty eight pushes it out beyond our.
Yeah. Reserve.
It basically becomes a placeholder at that point, so I'm okay with that.
I would make one suggestion. Don't, but, I mean, we know today, or even maybe in twenty eight, it's gonna cost ten million dollars to build it, right?
Not.
Is it gonna cost twenty?
Probably.
Well, if it's gonna cost twenty, then put ten million in there, but don't put the full amount in.
So my concern.
Because you don't, you wanna show that you're, you're, you're prepping yourself for fifty percent match or something like that, right?
Yeah, we need to get match dollars for that stuff too.
Everybody thinks, well, Breck will just do it anyway, so.
I think um, I do think that Rick has a really good point with. I think one of the reasons I thought it was a good idea to move it off of our five year is because. Um, the Board of County Commissioners keeps talking about that they're gonna build a center at Lake Hill. And I think that's gonna be on like a twenty twenty eight timeframe. And so I would be really, I'm just really reluctant to have a similar timeframe to another center. I mean, just this week, Greta called nineteen um toddlers who all passed on spaces at Little Red. And so I really think the next iteration, if we do have another facility, is going to be something like an infant only. And then that can help feed the preschool rooms like at Upper Blue and. And then that can help feed the preschool rooms like at Upper Blue and Dillon Valley and all the elementary school. So I, maybe there needs to be money to study like what, how do you? Rethink the childcare. Center that like doesn't have toddlers paying for infants because that's probably not going to work. Unless the state abandons, unless they find that they can't. Fill all the classrooms, um, in the elementary school. I don't know. They're just, I do feel like there are just so many unknowns right now. It's really hard, but I don't have any, I mean, if we put some number in. Um, twenty twenty-eight, then that's all right. Cause it's far enough out that.
The other thing that will keep this on your radar is you will continue to have a restriction. In the childcare fund, which you'll see every year at budget time that is specifically for childcare center. So. You know, if, if that satisfies, you know, your feeling that we need to keep it on our radar, it will be there or we can put it in both. Whatever works for you all.
Uh, I like restricting some funds for investment in childcare facilities down the road, whether it's new or a remodel, because you know. We'll either need upgrades or expanded capacity and, you know, I like your idea of kind of seeing how Lake Hill goes. Can we use that eight hundred and seventy thousand or seventy-five for, for housing for childcare? Can we? Cause to me there's, I feel like we've got to have some investment in that, that, that just keeps coming up. So if we, with this UPK. And extra infants, I feel like we're still going to need housing for childcare workers. So I'd, I'd love to. Continue with that investment this year, even though we're not going to spend money on a remodel there. Like, can we spend a million bucks for childcare housing to? Kind of try and get ahead there.
I'm not sure that we have the capacity to do more with housing than what we're already doing. So I don't think necessarily you would see a benefit in just in moving eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars over to housing.
How about on like buy downs, right? Cause then that's immediate and, or not buy downs, but, um, buybacks.
I don't think that's. We could talk about that, but.
To keep within our childcare discussions from the CIP perspective. Um, I think there's so many unknowns. So the placeholder in twenty-eight. I mean, I'd look to Dave. I mean, it doesn't, we don't have to hold it in our CIP or what makes the most sense financially, but the fact in our childcare fund. We have those restricted funds that council would have to take action to remove it. So the intention is there without. Forcing ourselves into a potential timeline, no matter how loose it is. So I'd prefer just leaving it all off.
I'm good with that too.
Yeah, buying off.
On, but for housing for childcare workers.
There you go.
Done.
Thank you. Okay, next part of the table shows you the funding sources for the capital projects we just discussed. Bulk of it comes from excise. We get a little bit of rent from our McCain leases. And then open space is funding their projects as well as half of the monitoring on the Blue River. And then we do get the Conservation Trust funds that need to be applied to recreation projects. Moving on down, we go to parking and transportation. And we have the Blue River Pathways project on there. In the memo, I. Included options. For what we're going to title a living lab plaza in the space where the schooner building once sat or. Will have once sat. So we're going to take down the schooner building and then we want to do something with that space. We just don't want to leave it vacant. So we are pitching a little plaza. Pretty low cost to just sort of see if that's a great use for that land or if it is underutilized. I mean, we want to look at different options. So I had Norris do two conceptual sketches that are in the memo. And I was hoping to get some feedback from you all on what you like about them, what you hate, if you want to do something totally different.
I thought they were both too much.
Too much?
For an experiment, for an experiment.
I would just prefer whatever we do there. We don't actually pave. It just seems so wasteful to put down the asphalt and then just rip it all back up. Can we just use crusher fines if we?
Absolutely. Fines are hard to pave. So we were thinking ass, this is why we went with asphalt. So if we wanted to have any winter use, we could have a payable surface. We can't really pave on crusher fines. So if we take that away, it would just accumulate snow over the winter.
Or you mean plow?
Plow.
Did I say? Oh.
Very confusing.
Sorry, I'm getting tired.
Man, I don't, I don't think the shade structures are.
Oh, yeah.
A complete waste. Even the.
Maybe the decking.
I, I don't know if any of that stuff is necessary yet. I don't, I don't.
So options carry a similar price tag? We haven't priced it, but I, I think so. So. If we think it's too much, let's just start with what we think we might want. Do we want a water station?
I mean, I think a water station, an e-bike and some bike parking. And then just some barricades. So you can't park there.
Is there a ba- is the bathroom there too close to the one that's right across the river in the, uh, structure? Parking structure? They're like as a. But looking at it, it's a hundred yards away, but. I also know that that was something that I've talked about last meeting of that be nice to have access to more. Facilities, but I guess.
Under yards is a long distance if you know.
This is geared this more at summer use, whereas the structure is more winter.
Yeah. Yeah, I. I think a bathroom.
Was interesting. I just didn't know if that was, if they were just some too close proximity together.
If it's a temporary thing, I think it's worth it. The try.
Would you be okay? Oh, go ahead.
I wonder if this is the right spot for Breck e-bike. To me, this is more of a tourist spot than a local spot to your, you know, your point of increasing.
Although the, this is the e-bike station that's right there, right next to this one is where all the bikes get. That's where all the bikes get dropped off in the mornings. There's usually, there's usually too many bikes at that location. So. That's a ripe one for, I, I agree with. I agree with that. It's definitely a, it's definitely a, an arrival location though. Is it, this might be, is this, I think is a classy porta potty.
The trailer is the classiest one I could find.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that if we were going to, if this is going to be kind of an experiment, you know, rather than plum the thing for.
Oh, no, we are only doing porta potties.
Okay, so that's right. Pretty classy. I like that.
Pull it away too.
Back in front of Kelly's house.
Either two ADA porta potties or the trailer. And then I think I would need to do an ADA. Traditional porta potty alongside the trailer, because that trailer had stairs.
No, that's good.
So do we like seasonal restrooms, porta potties here or no?
We're just see how it goes. Can we figure out what to do with that space?
Pull it away.
Do we want to do the trailer plus an ADA or just go with two ADA traditional ones?
No trailer ADA?
I think you should decide that.
Yeah, you gotta go up. That's a problem. The trailer is elevated a little bit, so there's.
Oh, I get you.
The staff is.
Fine, leaving that to you.
We're not experts.
I'm fine with that.
Restrooms.
Like to see it a little more. I'd like to really give it kind of a test and see what kind of use it gets.
Some carrying water, e-bikes and regular bike racks, barricaded off and put the porta potties.
Yep.
And maybe some picnic tables. Maybe we skip the shade, but just some places to sit and.
Only about three days a year, you need shade.
But you really.
Easy enough. Wayfinding is out in twenty twenty-eight. It's sort of a discussion item. Um, we wouldn't be taking action on it, but it had been a. Pretty active project, you know, five years ago when we were updating those signs. Um, if there's interest, we could move it closer, but.
I think really leave it where it is.
Investigating a roundabout at South Park and Main Street. Ethlot drainage and parking improvements. I have design dollars slated for twenty twenty-five. That's. More urgent that we start looking at that, um, ethlot drainage is. Need of some upgrades and this could also. Tie into what could happen at the Riverwalk Center. Village Roundabout, it's sitting out there as a discussion item, no action. On it. Have traditionally had a hundred thousand dollars a year for pedestrian lighting upgrades throughout town, based on the Nelson I guard study of. Um, making it more walkable as well as converting to more energy efficient ones. As we go for the dark sky, um. I don't know what, what it's called notation for the town. We need to start spending a lot more money upgrading our.
Did we say we were going to go to that upgrade? I thought we didn't.
We said staff was going to look into the dark sky and evaluate. We're going to.
What was worth doing?
Decide it, yeah.
Cause we need to walk the talk with the dark guy. I think. We need to change our fixtures if we're going to.
What did Blue River call it? They called it something like, they called it. Almost like dark sky light or something. I can't, I can't. They, it was a great term though.
Wasn't the talk that we were taking up a ton of staff time with the, like trying to fix the existing?
Dissing Wells box?
Yeah, and that we were going to move over to the new one. There's like a thousand. Ones that we had to do it.
We decided to keep the, the old traditional in the work sector and then start changing over all the others. Is where we landed last time, as I recall.
Okay, then the.
And I'm still in that camp myself.
Who is coming to correct us. She's running down here.
Alrighty. Um, yeah, we did have that discussion and we're gonna, Public Works is moving to switch all our streetlights. To the Providence fixture. So we're getting rid of the Wells box. That's all going over time. So, um, cause it, yeah, it was a pain to maintain and they were getting old and. Um, they were having to do a lot of repairs. So. Um, this way too, I'll have just one. Um, we've been doing a lot of meetings internally with the dark sky stuff and getting ready to. Make that application.
And so you think it's like a, it'll make a difference. Cause I think that what we had talked about was we want to do it if it's meaningful, but if we're just doing it to be able to check the dark sky compliance. Box, then we weren't going to do it. But you think it'll be a meaningful? Process.
I think so. And we can come, I can come back to you soon later.
Okay.
With more information, because we, we know quite a lot now.
Very short memories up here.
Maybe like, if there's a thousand, how many are we doing per year? Like, are we changing over?
There was like thirteen hundred or sorry, a thou- not thirteen hundred, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't know how many exactly we'll do a year. I think they were planning to do it sort of in sections.
Can you come back to us with a timetable on that?
Yeah.
Kind of how we're prioritizing locations, because I, I feel strongly about the storics. But we can talk about later.
Okay.
To not do, not change.
I mean, I think we should keep the old Wells box as long as possible in the historic district.
That's right. We had talked about like transferring from outside.
Yeah, because we do have the Wells box outside.
Okay. Right.
Like the.
We're definitely falling behind here.
On Valley Brook and, um. This, and the second one is the section in front of what we used to call Entrada. We have gotten some requests from staff that work in the Breck and. Who use that bus stop that there's not a continuous sidewalk to get from the bus stop to their place of business. So we felt it was important to. Give them safe connectivity there. If there were to be a development coming in and. Sooner than later, we could have the developer put that sidewalk in, but.
We talked to the landowner if they're interested.
Partnering, sure.
Some of them are here currently, looking at me right now.
Back there.
I, I saw them nodding. I think they're interested.
I think they said yes.
But in the sidewalk, okay.
Back there.
Have sitting out there in twenty twenty-eight, uh, new transit center as well as funding for a. Public Works admin addition. Sort of sitting out there hoping for some grants.
Okay.
We don't need any action on any of these. We can discuss them if you want, but it sounds like we're out of time, but we wanted to. Show council at the same time how we are spending capital dollar or how we're spending dollars on capital projects for both water fund and the Gulf. Enterprise fund.
Yeah. I don't feel like I need to discuss it, but it's really interesting. I appreciate you. Providing it.
Is Lower Blue Lakes the, a new dam? Is that what that's for? Start of that? Okay, thanks. Great.
About that later too. All right, anything else? Okay. Thank you. All right, we're going to take a short five. And I mean, short five. We're back in session with, uh, BGV Peak Eight Gold Rush Lot Development Discussion. Mark?
Thank you, Eric. Um, so this is our continuing discussions on BGV proposal. Uh, today we're gonna talk about three parcels. Uh, parcel, we'll bring, bring them up, up a map soon enough here, but parcel three is a South Gold Rush Lot where there's about sixteen. Market rate duplex units proposed. Uh, parcel five, which is up on. Peak eight, and, um, that's gonna have two whole ownership, new single family home sites, and finally parcel six. Um, which is also up on peak eight, kind of, um, near Timber Trail, and that's where the single family subdivision with twenty single family home sites is being proposed. Um, I also just wanted to mention Chris Kulik is having to join us remotely today, but, um, he may be able to provide us some input as well on this as we go. So what it like to do, Mike's got a short presentation he's gonna take you through, and then we'd like to go through these. One at a time, these three geographic locations with you, parcels three, five, and six, and get, uh, council input on a few issues that we've identified, so. No further delays, Mike?
Thanks, Mark, and thanks council for your time again today. Appreciate it. Um, do I have a, is there a clicker here? No, no, I mean, I can, whatever works for you, Helen. That works. Alright, and, uh, I will go as quickly as my mouth can take me on this to get through it in respect to your time for your budget and everything else you got going on, so. Um, a site map, which everybody's seen before, but just to refresh everyone's memory, parcel one is North Gondola. Two is North Gold Rush, parcels one and two from last time. Um, parcel three is South Gold Rush. Four is the admin site at the base, the ski mountain. Five are the two four tenths of an acre parcels. The end of four o'clock run road, and finally six is adjacent to Timber Trail. Um, and we're talking about three, five, and six today. Um, this is the, uh, South Gold Rush Lot with, like Mark said, we're, uh, um, showing. A site map with eight duplex units. I will say that if you look at that, they're all the same. They were copy and pasted in that, you know, circular fashion there, but. What is relevant about this is that there's eight, there's eight buildings, sixteen units, the total forty eight thousand square feet. It's the, the profit made on the forty eight thousand square feet in large part offsets the losses realized on. Infrastructure for not only the workforce housing, the subsidy for workforce housing, but. Bridge overpass or safe passage of those, those folks across the street as well as the roundabout. And a sidewalk that runs along Park Avenue between French and, I guess, Mountain Thunder. I don't know if there's a cross street. There other than Mountain Thunder. Um, so the forty eight thousand is central to, uh, our pro forma on this. Um. And no short-term rentals, um, ask or expectation on this parcel. There's an elevation of what the proposed elevation, generally speaking, of what these things would look like. Um, and I'll move on to an open space dedication. So we had talked about in the master plan approval for the Gondola lots. Which was approved in January of twenty one. Um, we had baked into that master plan approval, I think that's the right area, um. Of four acres of open space dedicated to the town, and we still want to be able, we still want to do that. As we restate and amend this master plan, it's important to us to get back to the community and do the open space. Um, and there's some, I think, relatively minor asks that go with that, us providing that level of community benefit to forever foreclosed development. On that site. Um, so on this, we will have a roundabout, which is obviously that round thing in the lower corner over there. Um, as well as a sidewalk that would run from. The entrance to this and across the street from the parking garage, which would house the overflow parking. Uh, part of that parking agreement that we talked about at the last meeting, that green. Swath there that runs along park, that's the sidewalk that would connect Mountain Thunder to the safe passage. Today, if someone skis down. And they're parked in one of these overflow, this is today's conditions. If they're parked. In one of those lots, a north or south Gold Rush, their safe passage is to go across Park Avenue. Head to the north and then cross Park Avenue again to get to those parking lots. There's no sidewalk on the west side of Park Avenue right now for safe passage of any of the skiers that come down. Four o'clock and, and terminate at the tunnel. I'm watching Jeffrey go through the, the map and his.
I'm following you.
Okay, there's not a safe way to, to go to the north or the south from that parking, from the two existing parking lots today. To get to that tunnel or to get to that, the, uh, four o'clock ru, run, is that four o'clock? Or is it ski hill? I forget what that one's called.
Ski back.
Ski back. Yeah, maybe that, that was part of the confusion when I said it that way. That ski back that goes to tunnel, there's not a safe. Pedestrian passage heading to the north off of Park Avenue. So we would propose to add a sidewalk there, um, as well, and so. Uh, illustratively on the site plan, um, this yellow space here, whoops, I hit the wrong thing. That yellow right here, this is a drainage ditch. That is not natural to this site. We believe that this was probably built. Back in, say, the two thousand six era when this Gondola went, when our Gondola went up here. Um, and what that drainage ditch does, according to the hydrology folks. The water runs from west to east on this parcel. All of the dots that you see in here. Are part of the, the vibrant wetlands that exist today. This drainage ditch created some wetlands down in here. Um, as this water came through, this is not a healthy part of the wetlands. This part is over here. In the original approved master plan, we were going to, um, I don't know if reclaim is the right word, but. Make that go away so that the water drained this way, whoops, through the rest of the wetlands and not. Through this man-made diversion that I don't know why it was put there, um, but it exists. And so we wanna vacate that. Through fill, which will dry this up, these wetlands that exist here. Um, and you can see that the buildings in three small parts touch the wetlands. This is a deck that overhangs the wetlands here. As well as decking here and here. But again, this is going to. Go away. Um, in addition to that, when we did the original. Master plan, um, we talked with the Army Corps. And this wa, this is a, what they call it, a non-jurisdictional piece of wetlands. It's substandard wetlands. And so the Army Corps, who has no skin in the game in terms of more development, said that it is okay for us to. Change on a one-for-one basis, the acreage that's impacted here and buy offsets elsewhere, which we've already purchased to offset. The less than two tenths of an acre that are shown in those two purple, or those two purple areas. Adjacent to those, uh, to those buildings. And so. The Army Corps, in the previous iteration of this, was good with us exchanging out substandard wetlands. For more important wetlands elsewhere in the valley. We've made that purchase. We're ready to execute that swap. And so we feel like. In combination with the dedication of the open space, that, um, having the variance that permits the buildings generally is shown. Is. Is a, is a fair exchange of benefit for both parties.
So you're saying the Army Co, Corps, you're talking about that yellow wetland?
I'm talking about, well, the yellow, they said we can get rid of this. It's not natural. They want, they want that to go away.
That's it.
Cause that creates a diversion that.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, please. And I wanted to say that upfront. Sorry, Shannon, if I say something that's not accurate, please slap me.
Okay, here's your slap now.
Okay.
Um, so these wetlands are non-jurisdictional, so that means they're not governed by Army Corps code. They're governed by time and Breckenridge code.
Okay. Okay.
Period. They didn't say you could do anything. All they said was, we're not gonna regulate the wetlands.
Okay. Okay, so we, thank you. Um, so we bought the two tenths of an acre to be compliant with. The town regulation of that wetland, um, and to have that offset.
So my question, Michael, the, the, the one when off-site wetland mitigation, is that for the yellow one?
For the purple.
Purple one, okay.
The yellow doesn't have to be mitigated, is that right? Yep.
Right.
It has to be, and we're gonna fill it.
Not right, or that doesn't have to?
It doesn't have to be mitigated.
So all your mitigation requirements are per town code?
Yep.
You have to mitigate per town code. All wetlands, just.
Okay, but the yellow is not a wetland.
For Shannon?
It's delineated as a wetland.
It is, okay, because the ditch.
Yes.
Oh, the yellow, okay.
And wetlands created by ditches are wetlands.
Okay.
A non-jurisdictional piece just means you need to follow town code.
Okay.
Army Corps code. So your ask to the council is about the town code only.
Okay, so our ask to the council is about the town code only. Um, thank you for your help. I, I mean, I'm just.
Say Army Corps anymore, just say wet.
Okay, well, I'll just say wetlands. Thank you. Um, and anytime, anything else I misspeak of, I'm, this is not my wheelhouse, so, um. I'm not trying to say anything misleading. I just, I'll ask her to intervene if I say something that goes even the slightest bit off.
So I think what you guys are saying together is actually what you've, um. Bought the offset for is for the yellow and then the portion down by the highway, right? The other wetland impacts are new as of this proposal, so you wouldn't have already bought them. Uh, that mitigation in the past.
I don't know, but he knows this better than I do.
Well, he does, so.
I'm just the pretty face.
Uh, so Kelly, to your question, Graham Frank from BGV. So when we did the original plan, we were cutting off the yellow area. The yellow area then cuts off the downstream flow to the two purple areas between those townhomes, bottom page. Also, the sidewalk impacts down at the bottom of the page there, the purple area. The only thing that is divergent from the original plan. Is the upper left purple area where we are infringing on those wetlands. So when we cut off the yellow, it then cuts off the water that's being diverted to that area. So we bought those credits. For all the yellow, all the purple, all the purple at the bottom of the page, and we bought enough to accommodate. Should you approve the upper left townhome there?
So who did the study that said when you cut off the yellow line, it would de-water those wetlands in the lower? Cause it's like a V cut out. That doesn't even make sense. It seems like it would. De-water the whole finger, right?
Andy Herb is the, the, uh, hydraulist and environmentalist that we've used.
The area that he get, said.
Correct. So what, when we originally, we looked at a few plans, working with, with Shannon's team. Looked at mitigation onsite, trying to push water around those townhomes. To the dry islands there where you see the blue outline in both, trying to rewater those. And Andy's opinion was we were better off reclaiming offsite in a place that was more environmentally viable because. The watershed, the more quality wetlands is in the island that we would be deeding back to the town. Because the water flow comes back through the two ponds where you see the moose at the upper side of the page and flows down. To the far corner of the site. That is the most valuable wetlands on the site. And Andy's thought was if we tried to pull water on around those townhomes to reclaim onsite, it could be detrimental to the more valuable wetlands. So that's why we followed that plan. The bottom is going to dry up. It wasn't before. Built, and that divergence was built, the, the, that created the wetlands by pulling water away from the upper area. Into that lower area. And so that's why we went through that plan with him. Then. We brought the Ar, Army Corps out to make sure it was non-jurisdictional, falling into Shannon, your code, government Shannon. To get to where we are today.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
Have you seen that entire report that Andy generated and are you in agreement with it? Cause I think that's an important piece.
We never received the final report and mitigation plan with the last most.
I think that's critical, is that our engineer reviews the entire report and, um, and.
And agrees to it.
Report to us on that.
And Chris McGinnis reviewed every draft of the report? So it.
Through all of the iterations, Chris McGinnis was involved in every iteration of the report.
But again, we're, we're hap, we're happy to share the report and we're trying to mitigate as best as possible and provide, you know, significant community benefit in the. In the scale of things, we're offering four acres of open space in these wetlands. Um, we want to have as part of this ask of variance. To Shannon's point on the non-jurisdictional stuff that is governed by town and code today, and so we're asking for variants that would allow. The end build of these buildings generally as depicted on this site plan. Um, and that's the, it, to boil it all down in terms of an ask on this site, that's, that's what's happening here is that. Between the. Trees here, which will be disturbed from the construction of the roundabout as well as the sidewalk that goes in. Um, that we want to, our position is that the build of the roundabout, along with the sidewalk. And the dedication of the open space, it, we feel like is. Based on our experience is a sufficient offset to the, that what we think is a minimal. Impact in terms of the amount of acreage that's touched. Two tenths of an acre here. Versus four acres here, plus the addition of the sidewalk.
Is there, so how does the twenty-five foot setback from wetlands? When you say it's just a, it's tiny bit like a point two acres or whatever it is, does that include the twenty-five foot setback that is? Required on?
No, and I, I think that maybe if Shannon wants to explain when the twenty-five foot came in, I don't wanna say something. I don't wanna say something wrong about this, so I'll just, I'll just stop on what you say, cause that, go ahead.
Sure. So in our code J, you have to have a setback of twenty-five foot from wetlands or other environmentally sensitive areas. They are asking with this plan to encroach, I'm not sure how far, but encroach into that twenty-five foot required setback. So generally you have your wetlands boundary. All your building and disturbance needs to be twenty-five feet away from that.
And what's currently being mitigated is just where the buildings would be actually on the wetlands, not on the wetlands plus twenty-five feet.
They're mitigating what wetlands will be destroyed through the construction.
Understood.
I believe the blue line is, is twenty-five foot setback, correct?
It's labeled as the.
It is, that's the twen, I believe that's the twenty-five foot setback, yes. Can you, can you speak to when that came into existence? Cause I know that there was in the Parkway Center original and like eighty-five or eighty-six, there wasn't this setback, and then again in two thousand and five and.
What you're thinking of isn't with, in relation to the setback, Mike? Up in twenty twenty-two, when we updated the engineering standards, we clarified some language regarding a plat date of nineteen eighty-six. Being allowed different exemptions versus newer platted sites. We clarified if your site was. Re-platted since nineteen eighty-six, you had to come into full compliance with the code. Therefore, this project needs to come into full compliance with the code, whereas your existing master plan was allowed that nineteen eighty-six exemption.
Right, and so, and, and I think that that's, and I don't wanna, that's why, I want, I don't wanna misspeak on this. So our original master plan. Did not have this twenty-five foot setback, and after it was adopted.
Had the setback, but we were, we were. Entertaining an exemption. It was never finally approved, but we were in agreement with your team that exemption would be. Permissible, given certain water quality parameters were met with your mitigation plan.
So the long and the short of that is that originally we anticipated being able to build within the setback per the original master plan pursuant to discussions we were having with the town. Again, I'm not. Dialed in on all the details on that, but that was our expectation, and I think that you're in agreement with that. And so. This twenty-five foot setback is, is legitimate, but somewhat new to the game for us in the context of what was approved of. That's suspended today versus what we're talking about, um, for this project going forward. Does that make sense how I just said that? Um, and so, again, I'm not trying to, I'm not, I don't wanna argue about the, the, whether the twenty-five foot setback, I don't, I don't wanna go there. I wanna, what I wanna say is that we feel like. We're providing legitimate community benefit in the form of open space. Now, don't even get into the other. Components of, of the benefit, housing, roundabout, anything else that. On a like-for-like basis that we're significantly augmenting the net gain of open space in, or wetlands in the spaces, in, in this community that's dedicated and preserved in perpetuity.
Where are those wetlands?
They were in their. They were, and they're, they're back. I don't know how to go backwards on this. They basically are. Look at, see this dash line right here, Eric? It's basically this down to the road, and there's a straight line that comes up over here somewhere near Mountain Thunder.
Where are the ones that you're buying? Where's the offset?
You'll find out. So it's these four acres that we're dedicating, and then the other two tenths of an acre is somewhere else in the, in the community.
While he looks for that.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. That location. So what we're asking is to approve um per seat out approval, a roundabout at Frenchen Park. To approve with seat out approval again, between Mountain Thunder and the roundabout, a new sidewalk for the community. Um, to allow us to re-vegetate the trees lost along park due to the roundabout, the sidewalk and potential buildings. There are, there's a stand of trees there that if I, I don't have the picture ready right now, but there's a bunch of dead lodgepole in there. There's some living, and good living trees there as well, but there will be some losses when we put in this infrastructure as well as the buildings. We would like to be able to re-vegetate that properly and make it look great and shield those buildings from the vehicular and pedestrian traffic on Park Avenue. Um, so the two uh, the town code to allow us a variance on that two tenths of an acre. Um, and then to allow disturbance within a twenty-five foot setback in exchange for the four acre dedication of open space.
Do we know the total acreage of the disturbance into the setback?
Um, no, but we can, we could probably figure that out, or we could, here's what I would say relative to development agreement. Is that if, if we had a parameter that said no more than X amount of square feet could be within the twenty-five foot encroachment, so that you knew that the scales tilted in favor of the town, and we'll sign up for that. Like, so what, by way of example, I'd say no more than two thousand square feet can encroach upon the, on the, on the, on the setback. Um, and that would be part of the development agreement, and that would bind us in the planning process. But we would, we would agree to a, a, a reasonable compromise on the amount of square footage so that you, so that you felt confident that it wouldn't go wildly beyond by just saying, okay, you can build in the setback. I get that you don't wanna say that. And so, but you can put restrictions on that and totally understand that and respect that.
Okay. I did, I need to get that figure whenever before we can make that.
I mean, I can.
To do it right now, but at some point before we decide what we're doing, we're gonna need to know what that.
I think that for the purposes of this, if you said you'd be willing to allow us with a to be agreed upon uh square footage of disturbance inside the setback, then we can tell you that number and you can sign off at a later point with like a fill-in-the-blank kind of thing. Not that we put any number in there, but say, here's the number, here's the calculation, here's the max threshold, and that's, that's what gets put into the binding agreement.
We'll table that, that piece for the moment.
Just real quick. Is there, like, is there kind of a pre-approved, a predetermined kind of landscaping mitigation or structural mitigation that could be in place when there is an encroachment to kind of lessen the?
Now, but you know, the wetlands piece operates sort of outside of the, of the traditional development code that's more goes through the engineering. It doesn't really go. You know, when you, when you bring in your, 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 um, your plan for your positives and and minuses, that's not, the wetlands piece isn't part of it. It's a little more, it's a little more cut and dried than this. We generally don't allow anybody to violate the twenty-five foot setback. So there's no offset of landscape unless during this process you say you're not gonna get positive points for the landscaping you do. That's gonna go to mitigate the wetlands. That has to be part of this negotiation.
Yeah, well, I guess what I'm asking is, is when it does encroach, is it kind of a accepted uh, accepted process to make the encroachment?
I don't know that we really allow encroachment. We do allow, not, not in the jurisdictional ones, but many times we've allowed through the Army Corps, which we don't really have a part of, of wetland mitigation by building wetlands somewhere else. Okay. A lot of times that, that, which is why I asked the question, because we've had wetlands built for us that have become a desert in two years. So it has to be, part of this has to be, the wetlands has to be in the right wetlands complex. It can't just be, I would mention a developer, but I won't, who built us a wetlands at one point, and it didn't last.
Yes.
A season, so.
Yeah, right.
So it ha- it has to actually be viable for.
Does it have to be within the town?
You know, years ago, it didn't. They used to build them outside of the community, and at some point, the planning commission decided, hey, hold on, this doesn't, we need to put it in the same watershed that, that the violation's taking place. I think that's an important piece for us, that it's in, inside the same watershed.
I would, I'd also ask um to respectfully, for you guys to respectfully consider the idea that the suspended master plan, we were gonna reach an accommodation with staff to be within that setback, and so we're, we're a genuine effort to be, to figure out what the common ground is on this. I mean, truly, there is, and, and feel like the, you know, feel like the open space is sufficient, but, you know, we were in a space where we had the expectation to have that resolved in the previous one, and so we're trying to figure out how to get that resolved with these, this variation.
Yeah, fair enough.
And, and so.
We changed the rules in the middle of the.
I'm not.
Eric, to answer your question on where, so it's dedicated in Summit County, Summit County watershed, governed by the National Forest Foundation and at a site selected by and maintained by the Corps of Engineers. So it's not us going and building. This is us paying into the programs of the, I believe there's either two or three projects they have underway in Summit County now. Correct. We have paid into, it's not a pay and loo that they hold.
It's a thing.
It's being used for current projects, and we're buying a portion of those current projects.
So ju- just.
If you say no, we're still bought a portion of the current projects.
You know, we have really been trying to do it in, in, you know, the Summit County watershed is not the watershed you're taking the wetlands out of. And that, for me, has been it's been a, you know, part of the issue is if you remove and from here, you know, we want it, so um.
When I had to buy some, it had to be in the.
Had to be in the upper blue, so.
I think we need to stick to that.
We can, yeah, talk about that as we go on. Uh, okay, what, what next, Mike?
Okay, um parcel five, this would be pretty straightforward, just a refresher map. There's parcel four, which is the administrative, administration building site. Parcel five are those two four-tenths of an acre um sites that we looked at a month or two ago, and we did that site visit, and then there's parcel six, which is the parcel adjacent to Timber Trail. Parcel five, um, as noted in the um memo that Chris drafted, um require a master plan amendment to allow single-family homes as opposed to what currently would be permitted, which is townhomes or multifamily dwellings. And so we wanna put, uh, we wanna, we intend to put single-family homes. We would need to have the master plan amended to accommodate that. Um, again, as with parcel six, we would stipulate to limit the size, the gross square footage of the home inclusive of garage. Conform with wa- water quality and drainage needs is articulated by the experts in the field and how that may influence water that drains down the hill towards the gulch. Um, we would make it, we'd make service available by the Mountain Metro District Association shuttles, which currently service most of the properties that base the mountain inclusive of Timber Trail homeowners. Um, and let us resolve the compromise solutions with our neighbors. We've done a really good job over the years of doing that. Um, if those of you who are part of the process, when we got buildings one and two at Grand, at G C eight approved, there's a cutout in between the two buildings. That was strategically placed to preserve the view corridor for the homes behind our project for certain people that were very vocal about that. And then um to the, to the west side of building one, that building deck was also pulled back in, in a compromised solution with the property owners at Ski Watch just above the property to preserve their views. And so we're, we have a, a good track record of operating well with our neighbors, and so I think your job is to say it's okay to do it. My job is to make it happen relative to, you know, whether they wanna fight about it or what accommodations we need to reach with them. I think that I have a high degree of confidence that we can get there um in a happy way.
Questions? So these, these two buildings, will they be more similar to the current neighbors or more similar to what you're gonna potentially build below them on?
Similar to the neighbors.
Okay, so the stuff that you're gonna end up building in potentially that, that peninsula on four will be something completely different.
That's right. That would be contiguous with the resort. These, the, the intention, these are single-family standalone homes. They may have resort privileges, that kind of thing. Um, but in no way are they gonna be part of the time share program or part of the deal. They are single-family standalone homes. Not to be.
We can restrict them to whole ownership?
Yeah.
But what about, they will be, they'll have the resort designation? Yes.
Right, so they would, they would still have that.
Right.
But they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be subdivided into one fifty-second pieces.
So the, the, are the neighbors in the county?
Yes. So the road terminates, whoops, I can't go backwards. Um, the.
Yeah, the, the road terminates and is county, so.
I can see it over here. I forgot about that last time.
So will you become, will that road then, that little piece of road be town road?
Oops. Well, I don't know how that works. I mean, this, there's a gate right here.
Right.
Um, and thi- this is, it's not even a cul-de-sac turnaround. And then um, and this is like, this is like a snow trail right here, and I don't even know, I didn't, I saw some pickup trucks, ski area pickup trucks driving on this, and probably driving back to their maintenance facility, but I don't know who uses this road in the winter time at all. It's, it's a locked and gated entry point right there.
Road in the town limits that if it's only serving, that part of the deal is must be maintained by somebody besides the town.
Yeah, we make it a private road. That's the responsibility, private drive, that's the responsibility of those two homeowners.
Gotcha.
Um, that's, yeah, that's no problem.
I just wanna make sure there's no weird thing that the town's gotta drive a plow up there to plow up.
No, we'll make it a private drive, and it's.
Twenty-five foot. Piece of road.
Just like my house, it doesn't get town snow plowing services.
That's unintentional.
There is a carve-out for Dudik's house.
There's a carve-out, yeah. Okay, other questions about this?
I think that one's pretty straightforward. Um. Because it's a, because it's simply an amendment to the master plan to allow the single family as a, in, in addition to what's already permitted vis a vis the master plan.
Mike, would you be open to be restricting it in a non, even though it's in the resort uh zone, to be non-short-term rental? Uh, just from a standpoint of that?
I hadn't anticipated that question. I don't, um, it's contiguous with the resort property, but I, I mean, I think that look, I'm not gonna be an idiot. I, I think all things that we talk about up here are negotiation positions, right? And so if that was a material consideration and, and balance with other, other things that we get and give, then yes, we would. I'm not gonna be closed-minded about anything.
Are you talking about the seventy-five hundred square foot home?
No, he's talking about short, just, just not having short-term rental licenses on those properties.
And the seventy-five under, under two.
Those two houses.
Question is, what, what's the, what's the neighbors, I know they're in the, they're in the county, so what?
That's carved out where they can, they're allowed short-term.
They're all short-term rentals.
They're all short-term, okay.
That pocket there, I think it's.
In fact.
Saw no four o'clock run.
Those two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is closest to it is concerned about their easements, like Jane Hamilton was concerned about hers back when the original approvals on the hotel. And we worked with her to figure out the access easements for her neighbor, her neighbors and herself. We would do the same thing with these property owners.
Okay.
This is um parcel six that we've moved to now, and this is this is um Timber Trail, uh delineated by the dash lines. This is the Breck Ski Area Maintenance Facility. You can see the gradient lines here. This is a pretty steep cut bank behind the maintenance facility here. And then this is the parcel six that we've been working on. We met with um Jeff Bald, who's the owner of this house, with the, in addition to him, other members of the Timber Trail HOA to discuss options um for access to this parcel um to try and find a common ground um with respect to access and uh building envelopes, et cetera, and I, I'm that we'll, we'll reach some accommodation that's satisfactory to everybody. I mean, you know, fundamentally, they don't want more cars driving in front of their house, but um, as I pointed out to them, Timber Trail was developed. This was the first filing of Timber Trail down here. And then there's these four houses were the second filing of Timber Trail. You know, and what comes after two, but three? Um, there's an access easement platted here, and I think that everybody that's paying attention, there was contemplation always that there would be development back here, which is why this access easement was put in here. But they, the neighbors asked us to examine alternative access points to these lots, and we did that. Um, and that, so this is the road that's the access easement part right here. This is one alternative, which is a spur off of Timber Tail Drive that climbs behind the maintenance facility. Um, these grades work, but this is a massively expensive road and quite a bit of site disturbance to come up here and, and do a switchback and serpentine. And basically, what you've gained in exchange for not building this road right here is this section of road, whoops, this section of road all the way through here. That makes sense? Um, and then it goes up to a terminal point with another.
It doesn't make sense.
Asked me to do? Yeah, yeah, no, but it, I.
Yes.
We agree on something. Craig, stop the meeting.
That's why I had to say it. We agree.
Um, so there's the, there's the road. Uh, and we think there might be some fire department issues with this, with either one of these plans as well. Um. So there's another version of this where the road goes to the east side of the maintenance facility and then climbs the hill again. Again, it's massive site disturbance to to gain access really to this point right here. Um, but again, we wanna be good neighbors, and they asked us to study this, and we're doing that. A- a- and um, so that's, that's that part of that. Um. There's the road, and so the parcel six considerations is to allow up to twenty home sites depending on fit. Look, we've been through a lot of different site plans on this, and I, my expectation is not sit here and, and say there's gonna be X number, there's a a certain number of homes on this parcel that we're gonna decide today. I feel like the way the process works in this community is that if you said up to twenty homes, and it's incumbent upon us to go to planning commission and vet that out thoroughly at planning commission, and then come back for the town council to have review of that final determination by the planning commission, to look at the building envelopes, look at the road placement and be satisfied through a thorough process, not one that happens in a matter of minutes in here, but that happens over several meetings at planning to say what's the appropriate number of lots, that where the, where the building envelopes go, where the roads go, et cetera, et cetera. And so um, we wanna have the latitude, we think it's somewhere between fourteen and twenty to be able to go to the planning commission and, and, and come back to the council through regular course of business to say, here's what, here's how this lays out. With the stipulations, again, that we would limit the home sizes to no more than seventy-five hundred feet inclusive of garage, no short-term rentals. Um, variants ask for these homes. Fit test evaluated at planning commission level for a lot count road configuration. Um, we conform with water quality and drainage needs is articulated by the experts. Um, there's a, a note from, was that in the packet, Mark, about the ten percent? I forget if that was just a separate email or not. So many details to keep track of. We're, we understand that um as, as ten percent of the purchase price of the land from Vale that's on us. Um, it would be serviced by the shuttles again, even though it's not short-term rental, and then we would resolve our compromise solutions with neighbors. Um, and so.
Is the ten percent fee and loo mean?
That's for open space dedication.
Oh.
So with any new subdivisions, we require ten percent of the land is either dedicated or there's a fee and loo.
Okay.
Provided.
And it's gonna be based on the purchase price?
Yeah. It's, yeah, it's gonna be, be based on the value of the unsubdivided property.
Okay.
Right. Yes. And um, so, and we have the option as a town to either accept the land dedication or the fee. In this case, I think we'd be looking at the fee because if we're gonna accept land, we want something that's really valuable from an open space perspective for the, for the public, and that's how it reads.
Which I don't disagree with, cuz if we had to give you open space, we'd figure out the junk lots and make them the open space, and that doesn't do anybody any good, so.
Agreed.
Mark, what uh land use district, would this go into forty?
Uh, good question. It could. That's, I think you're referring to the one that uh Timber Trails in right now, Jay. Yeah, so that may make sense. It's a very, it's a similar type of density that's being proposed there. Right now, it's in Land Use District One. Um, we can go through a land use district change. We can also go straight to a master plan amendment. We can also go straight to a master plan amendment. This whole area is within the, the peak seven and eight master plan. But right now, um, it's just designated as ski terrain with no density on it. Um, so obviously the density be transferred from something from the North Gondola lot. But um, we would, um, as part of a master plan amendment, which would have to happen to allow all this to happen. Um, we could assign density to that, and that obviously goes through a public process where the public comes in and gets to participate in that.
What is the units per acre for Timber Trail in the land use district forty right now?
Hang on just one second. We've got that. We did a, Chris and I did a little evaluation that um ends up being um point six acre, point, uh, point six and a half acres per lot. Um, and Mike's proposing maximum seventy-five hundred square foot homes on each one of those lots. And I believe there, and there's twenty of them he's, he's proposed. If you look at Timber Trail, it's pretty similar. Um, there are point six acre lots on average, and they're about seventy-five hundred square feet um average.
Bigger average. So that's, there's smaller ones.
Yeah. Look, right there, Jay. There's a small one compared to this guy right up here.
Yeah, some, some are down to a third acre in size, up to um, I think in Timber Trail, close to two acres in size. Uh, what Mike has up here, I think he's got as low as point three acres and then a little above an acre in size.
Like all these up top are over an acre?
Right. So that would bring the average to where?
It's similar.
Six, seven or whatever it is.
Yep.
Point six against point six. It's.
We want to be contiguous with the neighbors.
And I was reading that correctly, that there's no STRs in that.
Correct. No STRs.
And these will be whole ownership or?
Correct.
Fractional.
Whole ownership.
Whole ownership.
And you can put that in the development agreement too.
Would those lots have disturbance envelopes and setback requirements as well?
Yeah.
Just like.
That's why I'm saying we need to go through planning to figure out to properly vet that and make sure that everybody on staff and commission has an opportunity to weigh in on that, and then you ultimately have final jurisdiction on that.
Mark, go ahead, Jay.
You know what? I I hear what you're saying with that, you know, this has to go to planning first before it comes back. I just want, I don't know how to, I'm, I'm too new at this to know how to protect against it. Going, okay, well, you know, for it to go to planning and say, hey, this is what council wants. And then when it comes to us, say, this is what planning approved, then you're just like, the game to change it. Like, I'd like to have. I don't, I'd like to have a, a roadmap of where, where these decisions go, where it's not too late.
I with, I, I think that you could accomplish that by, by talking about the average lot size. I mean, you know, the, the parcel is what it is, right? It's eight point eight acres. And so if we had an average lot size, that tells you your maximum threshold. If planning went, if we did it, threaded the needle perfectly to that. The point six divided into eight point eight acres, whatever the number is, tells you what the max capacity is if you want to be, use that average. Um, and so that creates your upper threshold and then the boundary moves downward based on fit test and site evaluation. So it's never more than, you can create an environment where it's never more than a, a, a certain number of lots.
I, I'm, I'm just going to say that these are large, relatively large lots, just like Timber Trail. My guess is they're going to meet a fit test. So if, you know, if twenty go to the planning commission, they're probably not going to find a compelling reason um to say, no, we need to whittle it down to fifteen because we're talking about half to one acre lots. There's places you can fit a building site on most or all of those.
So my, my, my question will be though, if you look at the layout right now, they're one, two, three, four, five, there are six third of an acre lots, though.
Mm-hmm.
Seven, seventy-five hundred square foot home on a third of an acre lot may not fit.
It does it for my house.
Is that what your, is yours third of an acre?
Yeah. Like all the shock hill is those, they're small.
They're little postage.
They're little postage stamp lots and and, and honestly, I'm not looking to redo my neighborhood. It's a.
Yeah, right.
From a development standpoint, I think there's a value in having some bigger lots because I see that that I see to the detriment of the property, of my property value, having neighbors that close. And so I'm not going to, I'm not, I think that having an average lot size stipulation is, is okay because I'm, that's what my intentions are. So I'm fine with that as a component of this.
The issues we talked about before was uh getting a water study and making sure that there was maybe enough water pressure up there for sprinklers.
That's on us. And of course, that's, we would do that. Yep.
At what point in the process does that happen? Does that happen? Like where, where is that required in your, in the process?
I assume that's like a no go, go, no-go thing with the town and having the hydrology people say this is, this works or doesn't work, right?
Yeah, but it, I mean, it's not going to be at the development agreement stage, so it'd be at the development.
And from the town's perspective, and I'll look to James to tell us. It's probably all doable, but at whose cost? So would, you know, if, if it needed a, a new uh storage tank or something like that in order to make that pressure come or what, it's, it's doable, but you know, then it's going to be upon the developer to make sure that it meets the, the threshold needed to, for adequate pressure.
Do we have a storage tank right above this?
Yeah, but there are some challenges with.
Yeah.
Rick, there is a storage tank right above there. It's Ski Hill um one. And um, this, this piece of it, it would be all on the developer to kind of go through that exercise to work with an engineer to make sure that all those flows are adequate. At the end of the day, I mean, there's always booster pumps and stuff like that to, to get that pressure, but.
Did you enlarge that tank or is that not part of the hydrology?
I don't think there, just, just knowing what I know right now, I don't think there'd be any need to enlarge the tank. There's a, a pump station at the bottom of Ski Hill that puts up the eyes a little wider up there anyway. So we, it's just a matter of the refill of that, recharge of that. So.
And if we had to increase sizes of pumps or anything like that, that would be on the developer?
Correct. After we saw that, after we, if the developer ran into any complications or questions about that, we'd certainly be talking, you know, with the water division about what that would look like from terms of delivery. So.
Right. I think my last question on uh parcel six is just, especially with the lot sizes being what they are, the detention facilities and runoff management and how that obviously there'll need to be a plan, but does each lot need to have its own detention area? And if we're looking at thirteen thousand square foot lot sizes with seventy-five hundred square foot houses on it. Is there room in that? Is that part of the fit test?
Generally detention is done by subdivision. So we would anticipate seeing some land dedicated within this new subdivision for detention and water quality.
How much land does that usually take? Are, are we talking about like an acre or like? What does that look like in?
I don't think it would take an acre, but it's definitely going to impact at least one of these lots as drawn here.
Thank you. Yeah. That's very important to me as well, Jay. It's good.
And we'll, I mean, we'll make that happen. I, I have no problem with this discussion. We want to do it right. And we, you look at the buildings at the base of the mountain right now. There's by way of comparison, you can look at the buildings and see the detention ponds on the east side of, of Ski Hill Road. So seven, you know, for up to twenty homes. If we need to vacate some of the land for detention, we're going to do that. I mean, that's just, that's part of the variability of us not knowing how many houses to create a range today and then to be able to come back through the, through a fully vetted process to say, here's what fits. And here's how it fits and answers the questions that you rightfully ask about water quality and detention and things like that, that those are asked and answered to your satisfaction at the final approval process for that subdivision.
I think, I guess it's harder to take away uh than to add i- in my mind of the fact that if you, if you come and present this at twenty lots and it goes to a planning commission application with twenty lots. I would find that it'd be harder to pare down to eighteen if that was what was necessary versus coming in with sixteen and saying, hey, if there's, there's more room, where do I put, you know, we'll present another one. But um you know, that's just my opinion of going, when you're presented a planning, uh, uh, from my comfort zone, I would love to see a few less lots with the stipulation, we may add more if there's, if the fit works versus coming and saying, yeah, here's twenty, and if we have to lose one, we will, or if we have to lose two. But um, I guess that'll all.
So there's a, um, there's a stand of trees along the bat on the, well, the left of this drawing. I don't even know where I am right now, but on the left of the drawing, there's a stand of trees. Uh, that's the snowflake lift, right?
Yes.
Okay. So there's a stand of trees there that when you ski back down, you ski along that stand of trees. Is that? Is that the li- is that that line or is that, or does the property line go outside of those trees? And what's going to?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you going to separate yourself from the?
Yep.
Right?
Great question. And there's an email in my inbox from the ski area about a sixty-foot setback from these lines that we're going to have to conform with as well, um, which is probably not depicted um on this lot line right here. So this is likely to shrink over here pursuant to what they're requesting and what you're talking about.
Is that what that light purple line is maybe? Or not, maybe not.
This right here?
Yeah. No, there's a purple line right there. Yeah. Nope. Go in, in bounds. It's, it's light.
Oh, this right here. That could be, I think that's a, that straightens out right there. I don't know, Eric. Um, you can see the slope falling away as you come down to.
Well, because ended, the end of the day, that thing is mobbed with people going back to four o'clock runs. So you got to make, I mean, I don't care about what Skieria does with their business model. It's an important way to get people back into town. So.
Very clear about the need to have setbacks that, that service their skiers.
Okay. Fair enough.
I'm sure, I can share those with you. Um, but again, that would be, I think, part of the, the fit test where we would say, this is, this is one of the, the guardrails to this parcel is the setback on this, um, this section of land, and then you guys would all know um prior to final approval.
Um, Eric, I just wanted to re-emphasize what we said in our staff report in terms of staff's position is regarding the road, and it seems like the council's going down this direction. It does not make sense to do another road up here. I mean, to extend the road through Timber Trail is going to result in the least disturbance. It just makes sense from a lot of perspectives. And honestly, another one of those roads is going to have a tough road with the planning process in terms of, you know, complying with um seven R, et cetera.
I, I would like to see the verbiage from the submittal um with Timber Trail two, just to show that that was contemplated, other than just contemplated on a, on a piece of paper, right? Eight. I mean, it seemed from.
Phase three.
I mean, yeah, for, or just that, that easement was there for. Not that I want you to build that other road. I mean, honestly, the other road, even from the neighbor's standpoint, will be detrimental because of the headlight turning um will be an issue. And you can, you can talk to them about this as, as you, that's what you need to do. So. Um, okay. Other questions on six?
Yeah, um, Mark, you, you said that the ten percent fee and loo is based on market value of the property, correct?
It's based on, uh, I'll read you the exact words, Dick. Um, it, it, it equal to ten percent of the value of the land prior to subdivision.
Okay. I, I just, um, you know, I know how the ski area works and they're not going to disclose sales price numbers and all of that and probably not allow Mike to. I, I would be far more comfortable establishing the value of that land um as opposed to just going off the sales price because you guys have such complicated deal with the ski area. This gear is pretty, keeps it all pretty close to the best and.
And I'm going to pay a transfer tax on this because it's in the town. And so they're going to, from them to BGV. And so there'll be a recorded sale. Okay. It'll be known.
I'd still, still like to see an, an analysis of what the value is done independently by.
Independent appraisal.
Yep.
You know?
I, I would like to see that.
That we pay for.
It, it, you know, your deal with Skier is very complicated with lots of moving parts and there's lots of pieces to negotiate in there. And uh, you know, we don't have any, yeah, I, I'll just be more comfortable, you know, it's trust and verify, right? And I mean, that's our job. And I think that verification piece is super important.
Yeah. The questions on six? All right, let's go to.
Eric, I wanted to bring up one thing that we didn't include in the memo. And it's just the provision, it's one of our favorite provisions in the subdivision code.
Go ahead, Chris.
Is uh, is the plane, the plane geometric shape portion, they may need some relief potentially. I mean, just looking at some of the side lot lines are not, um, you know, are greater or less than um the recommended angles. There is a, there is relief in the subdivision code um because of steep hillsides, but it's just something I wanted to bring up, and I think we didn't think about, or I didn't think about until I was just looking at the site plan just now.
Wouldn't that be handled at planning? Yeah, well, I mean, no, that gets handed that.
Exactly what we said last time. Please let us know when we're violating.
Thank you, Chris.
But to his point, I want to, I, I want to make sure that if we need that variance to, like this lot, this lot up here that has.
With the little flag on it.
Yeah, this little peninsula. Um, if that's not conforming, then we need to have an honest discussion about having the variance so that does conform and it doesn't get derailed in planning. We know the intent of this um subdivision here.
Where's the flag?
You see this, see this little, that little thing right there. Generally, we don't, and we have allowed it. You just, it's a variance. And there may be a, and then it depends on the topography too, that's part of this thing. So, other questions?
I'm good on six, but we kind of rushed out of three.
No, we're going to do comments now. This, this is just questions.
I have questions on three that we, I didn't get a chance to ask.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, is three going to be whole ownership?
Yes.
Okay.
Two, right? Not, oh yeah, it is three, three. Okay, sorry.
And that's zone, zone three for short-term rental, correct?
I believe so. I don't.
Yes.
But no short, no, it's a neighbor, considered neighborhood short-term rental zone. Um. Okay. That was my last question. I've got comments, but no question.
I haven't talked to, um, what's his name? Dell Nordstrom. I haven't talked to him this summer. But we were in a, we left this in a good spot when we finished the master plan. I have no reason to believe he would be upset about how this is modulated into six hundred less cars across the street and, and the town homes here. I think that they're going to be pretty darn happy with the outcome of this.
One last question. Um, the, the um density, the, the units per acre of adjacent woods compared to parcel three?
Yeah. So. So Woods is um a little more dense in terms of they're much smaller lots or like ten acre, almost like footprint lots in there. And um average square footage is like twenty-four hundred, twenty-seven hundred square feet, including the garage. Mike's proposing three thousand square feet for each side of one of those duplexes. Um.
Six thousand.
Six thousand per duplex. Yes. Yeah. And um on uh basically um, this site is about three and a half acres. The woods is two and a half acres.
Laborish. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Mike, on this parcel, is there an alternative layout that would not impact wetlands?
Um, yeah, I, in terms of the setback or the, the wetlands, the, the purple area or?
Well, first and foremost, the wetlands.
Okay. So I think that I think that the alternative layout in my rough math. I think that the alternative layout in my rough math is that we're gonna lose one building. Um, because. We could put. Like a single family or some small duplex right there, you can see the setback line where this deck encroaches on that. This peninsula right here could probably accommodate a pretty good sized duplex back in there. Um, maybe this road pushes in, the answer is, we can, we can move it around, but I think that we're gonna lose. At least ten percent, if not closer to fifteen percent of the total of the forty eight thousand square feet that we're proposing. Um, and it just starts to, I mean, it starts to get. You know, difficult on. It's that we're calculating the subsidy across the street all in at seventeen million bucks, and so we gotta. That's gotta pay for this, in in large part, the the parcel six helps pay for that as well, but. We look at the downtown stuff as is largely its own independent entity with some marginal contribution from the other lots. Um, and so this gets really. Close to not happening, um.
Well, I appreciate that you're trying to make it parcels sep- or to pencil separately, but. It is, I mean, you have six different parcels, and that's all part of this discussion, so.
I get it, I mean, the answer is, I mean, we can. We can, I think that we can, we put down, like I started to say, we copy and pasted or build it, six different. That are eight different of the same units around this donut. I think that there's probably a another way to do this, of course there is, um. And that's where I would say that. I'd be happy with a, a cap on the amount of square footage that could be inside the twenty five foot setback as a. I think is a fair compromise, so that we don't get into the wetlands at all. Um, even with the allocation of the four acres of open space, um. That feels like a good space in terms of getting, achieving the square footage that we need to make it work while still. Answering some of the concerns about the wetlands.
Great.
How how many on on the, when the encroachment on the wetlands? Twenty five feet, how, what is it then, if it's not twenty five, is it? Twenty feet from the wetlands, or do we know?
What he's saying is.
No, no, I'm just asking, and in this, as as he's proposed, well, if you look at.
We would go up to the black lines, Jeffrey, so these black lines, these thick ones.
Yep.
That delineates the wetlands, and so right there, you couldn't build past that, you couldn't build past this right here.
Oh.
I mean, I think I would. Encourage you to. Um, figure out if you could. Preserve some of that setback, because, you know, just because. The wetland is delineated on that line at the surface, doesn't mean that the wetland. Doesn't do something else under the surface, so. I mean. Just a responsible development seems like if you can. Be more than, you know, three inches back from the wetland line, then.
I mean.
That would be preferable.
Yeah.
So I guess that that would be my question is, if there's a feasible. Layout that would keep you out of the wetlands entirely, and then provide some level of buffer. I just, it seems like. Um. You're willing to look at that, and so I.
Of course I am, I mean, and I, I just wanna provide directions, so when we can, we get to the planning part of this, and we have the discussion with Shannon, that. We're both in agreement on what we're talking about, where Shannon's not having to slap me and correct me on things that we're saying here, so. I just like for us to be, you know, simpatico on that, what those numbers are, um, because it makes the process, I think, go better for everybody. If we're aligned, and so. Um. Again, I don't think that our our feeling, based on what the experts have told us, is this is not an issue here, once this is. Mitigated or or returned to its original state, that said, I hear you loud and clear. Want to say that the setback is ten feet from the wetlands, then as a variance to this, then then we'll. Fit what we can fit in there, and. We're just trying to get to forty eight thousand square feet.
Okay, any other questions before comments? Who wants to start? You have a question? Yeah, you know what, I I I'm almost embarrassed to ask, because I'm a, I'm a known bunny humper, and I'm I'm like. I'm the environmentalist with Kelly, but. But is. It, okay, so so say a home is is twenty six feet away from a wetlands. Or or kind of a marginal wetlands, are are we kind of splitting splitting hairs saying? Okay, yeah, you know, we could screw up this kind of marginal wetlands. If we kind of create a better wetlands, a healthier wetlands, that's at a place that's. Not even encroached by any sort of development at all, I mean, that's there again, if. Is it always? Uh, kind of an a a hard no to develop on on anything that's a wetlands? Even if you're replacing it at a wetlands that's more healthy, more vibrant, more sustainable? I mean, even if it's twenty six feet, wouldn't twenty six feet of development, near the development, wouldn't that be kind of a a a negative? Degradation of of the wetlands and?
Yeah, yeah, that's just where the line's drawn though, and that the code is twenty five feet.
Yeah, that's, so that's my question.
Yeah.
And I think the point in keeping it here is that that wetland does function as a holding spot for all the water and snow melt that's coming off of the mountain.
So it's not a, it's not a habitat, or it's more.
It is habitat as well.
Okay.
But, and he's just saying it's not a high quality wetland, because it doesn't have, you know. Deep soils and all kinds of different vegetation, it's really just willows in there.
Okay.
That doesn't mean it's not acting as a place for water to slow down before it gets into the.
But as far as the greater, the greater good was if if we had a negative impact on that wetlands. And we created a in a a healthier wetlands at a place that isn't encroached at all by development. Would that, would would that be a wash, or or is this something we should like tenaciously? Hang on to every, every wetlands, even if it's surrounded by by homes?
I mean, I think. I guess the really hard part is that tons and tons of wetlands have been impacted from development all over this, and so. If every time you give away a tenth of an acre and tenth of an acre, then we just won't have a functioning wetland at all.
By a thousand cuts.
Yeah, and so I don't think it's something that we need to. You know, die about, but the whole point of having wetlands regulation is that if there's a feasible alternative, and you don't have to impact the wetland, don't. And he's saying there probably is a feasible alternative, so I don't know why we wouldn't take him up on that.
You answer my question?
Feasible alternative, and there's also a four acre blob up there that gets dedicated to town too, so. As a, you know, dose of sugar to make the medicine go down.
Well, in another way to look at it, you know, it's one big negotiation. Mike's asking for twenty lots up at, uh, you know, the top there, um. Maybe there's a reduction here, and you're more comfortable with a higher number of twenty up at parcel six.
That's it. Okay, final thoughts, Jay? You wanna go, or?
Sure. Um, I appreciate it, Mike, I appreciate all your time and effort and. Um, same with staff, Shannon, thank you. Uh, I do think that there is an impact to impacting wetlands, and. You know, to the discussion we just had. In my mind, the twenty five foot setbacks are firm, and that this is about a fit test, and if the. If it doesn't fit. It doesn't fit, and we, and love to see, and if that means one less duplex, because that is, um. Hey, just because we wrote down eight duplexes to start with. It was always just like the lots based on fit. And so I just, I would really encourage. Um, council not to waver on that, uh, because I think that's when we. Really, when development agreements have a negative impact, is when we. State in the development agreement a variance from code which is there for a purpose. Um, I do, I am so appreciative of the sidewalk on the west side of the highway. I think the roundabout on front, on front street. And Highway nine is fantastic, and I think that will, uh, do a lot to mitigate. Uh, the traffic going in and out of that parking structure, um. That's why there is. The tree retention and the the efforts that are gonna be made to keep those, um. That buffer between Highway nine and the duplexes is fantastic, uh, look forward to seeing that. Um, come to fruition. On parcel five, I really don't have any comments, I think we're in a. Pretty well alignment on what that's gonna look like, and that that's already, uh, set up. You know. Only in the master plan, other than change, allowing to add single families. Um, parcel six, just looking again, um, is there a size, a a lot minimum that is needed? I would really like to see, um. You know, how that. How the agreement with the neighbors go at Timber Trail, and trying to. Uh, have some agreement with them prior to moving forward with this about. The road going through their cul- that cul-de-sac and that that uh, access evening, uh, easement. Um. Obviously, the, all the cost of the new subdivision does fall on the developer, which makes sense, uh, having a water study done. And really looking at runoff management, and seeing how that, how the detention facilities work. And having that verified early in the process. Um, and then lastly is, uh, working with upper blue sanitation to making sure that that's set up. In a way that is feasible for this. Uh, to service and to have that done. But, uh, all in all, I think that. There are some compromises that have to be made. Um, I I I would prefer not to see that on the wetlands, and to be firm on that.
Carol?
Yeah, I think Jay brought up lots of good points there, um, first on parcel number three, the duplexes. Um, I agree what's been said with impacting the wetlands and being. Conscious about trying to avoid that if feasible, I think this entire discussion is a little difficult without having. Um, Shannon Town Engineering Staff vetted beforehand, so we know. We're agreeing on the, just some of the baseline that's presented there. Um, on parcel five, I had no real issues, partial six, I think we'll come down to further vetting within our. Subdivision standards and what does truly fit within there. Um, Jay brought up a lot of the points, of course, the retention ponds, studying water quality. Um, and importantly, making sure there is continuity with the existing timber trail there. Um, but I appreciate this next step, getting closer as we continue to compromise, um. I think this step in the process was a little difficult for me, because I don't think, or. What we prepared with a memo didn't capture everything that we're discussing, and truly highlights what are our decision points, and it doesn't feel like we're. At many decision points, we're just further compromising. And I appreciate that.
Jeffrey? You know, like, all my opinion is always kind of, uh. Balanced with the abomination that would have been, um, big structures in the Gondola lot. So I'm a a a more sympathetic, I I will, I will defer to. To, you know, Kelly and people that are, you know, and and Shannon about the wetlands, I I was kind of. Ready to take the greater good, um, on on the 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 Gold Rush lot and. And and sacrifice that in order to have, uh, as I mentioned before, create a. A healthier, more sustainable wetland someplace else, but. Listening to to everyone else, and particularly Jay and Carol, um. I'd like to see, you know, if there's any way we can work around that, and kind of hearkening to Mark's. Uh, to the point, uh, maybe we can, uh, have some wiggle room with, uh, uh. Adding some, some more gives on another location to to mitigate the loss of of having to. Lose a, lose a home or whatever in the North Gondola lot, uh, as far as the ti- that that road through, um, that. Yellow Brick Road that goes up by the, uh. Uh, by the admin building, um, that that's a, that's a hard no for me, um, I I think this, the sensible thing is to go through Timber Trail. I can remember when, uh, Timber Trail was built, gold can have had hot burn, because a bunch of people from Timber Trail was gonna, were gonna go buy their property. So, um, you know, it's this, uh, it's the curse of living in a place where a lot of people want to live, um. Pretty much, uh, also, I think we need a definitely, uh, a water study. And and certainly vet by by our people as well, I am, um, a a little concerned about. Uh, I don't know, we didn't really talk much about it today, but the PK development, um, make sure that the runoff isn't something that. Is going to, we're gonna regret into in cucumber gulch, but, uh, yeah, that's about it.
Go ahead.
I appreciate all the hard work by staff and the applicant, I think the three parcels we're reviewing today. I I think that's, we've made good, good progress, um, certainly comfortable with, uh, parcel six, I think the, uh. Amount of units there is consistent with Timber Trail, which I appreciate, I think the road should go through, um, as the easement, um. Presents and and not adding that big, long road, I think there's some implications for the, uh, ski area. Um, operations if if we went down by the maintenance building there, so I think that one's good. Um, parcel five, like the single family residence, as well as, uh, totally comfortable with STRs there, it's consistent with. The, uh, the adjacent property, so that that is logical and thoughtful to me. On this parcel here, um, would love for you to look at the fit test, as Kelly suggested, to see, is there another way to do this? I think on the wetlands piece, I'm comfortable encroaching in the wetlands if we set back. Um, if we offset. To the twenty five foot setback, that'd be a nice little bump in there for being allowed to go in there and and. Uh, impact those wetlands, um, but great work and appreciate the effort so far. Look forward to seeing it evolve.
I also appreciate the efforts and, uh, appreciate the openness to this discussion, Mike, I I really do, it's, um. I think it's important to this process, um. Parcel three, I I think it's really important at the out, on onset of this discussion, that that. Shannon Smith has the opportunity to, to really study the entire report from the hydrologist, um. I, you know, I just, I, it just scares hell out of me to to fill that that yellow ditch and. That's feeding wetlands and and hope that we're not, um. Affecting the entire hydrology of of that area, it's it's just too complicated for me to. Go down that road without a really, really thorough analysis by by town staff, so. So I think that's, that's really important to hear from Shannon, once she's had a chance to look at, and I think it's super important she looks at the entire study, because. Wetlands connect and and in the, the, the entirety of that, that site is is important, um. I I agree with Jay, I I think this, the the wetlands and the twenty five foot setback are. Or a place that I I'm gonna feel a need to stick, stick, um, true to, and, um. And and really, it's not a place that that I feel like is is the right place to to, um, to to compromise a lot. And there are certainly others, um, where we can compromise, um. One of which being the driveway, you know, I'm perfectly fine with, with a, um. Um. You know, relief on the requirement of the driveway, you know, how many units are on a driveway that that, you know, code is certainly, we can. Give on that one, um. I feel strongly with Eric that the offset, the wetlands offset. Um. Which I hope there isn't any, but if there is, it needs to be in the upper blue. Um. Um, I really appreciate the sidewalk, uh, the roundabout in the wetlands, the open space, uh. Um, dedication, I. And and I just, I, you know, I, I know we're relating it to this project, but, um. You know, really, this is, you know, to to parcel three, but it really is is in relation to the entire project, and, you know, C dot. I think said straight up at the very beginning of this process, um, quite, quite some time ago, that that would be required. To do any kind of development down here, so, um, and it's been agreed to from the beginning, so. Um, I have some, some serious concerns with the screening, if there's enough room, so while you're. Playing chess with the site plan, um, I have real concerns with the ability to to properly screen. Um. From Park Avenue, the with, you know, once, once you put a sidewalk in there. Um, you know, is there enough room to properly screen those buildings from Park Avenue, I thought that's something that's very important to me. So, um, you know, hopefully we can take a hard look at that while we're, um. You know, looking at the site plan and and moving things around. Um, I'm okay with five, I think a couple of single family homes and. And, uh, in that area, um, I I really hope. That you work hard to work with the current owners behind them, um, I I know I'm. Um I I know I'm, I would guess they're disappointed to hear that. When they thought they had direct access and sight views of, you know, sight to the um to trigves and now it's it's being encroached upon. Um so I think it's it's super important to to work with those homeowners. Um. Parcel six, I I agreed with agree with the road alignment. I I, you know, it's it's far less disturbance and makes sense. Um I I I do think we need to follow the code and and I think the town. Needs to have the property assessed um and to to understand the. Um value as the code reads, the value of that land. Um I just, it's just too complicated of a. Too many moving pieces and too complicated of a area this area to go purely with, you know, carving out the the purchase price for this piece. Um and I think we need to be super careful with drainage up there, you know, going into cucumber. So again, I I appreciate the uh willingness to take a hard look at three. It it that's the hardest site from one of these three by mine.
Kelly.
I um I agree with so much that's been said. Um Mike, this process has been really positive and I really appreciate. How when you come in, you don't seem incredibly married to any of these. Plans and I know I'm sure that is very difficult to do because I know you're spending a lot of time and money. So I really, really appreciate. Um that is um very impressive. I also really appreciate that you put um a cap on the side the sides of the houses up there. I think that was a really good move and it feels very. Responsive to a lot of things that we've talked about here in council, so I appreciate that. Um and. I won't go back into my my only real meaningful comments are um on parcel three and you seem very willing to look at it. So. Leave that in your hands. I um while I'd love you to stay out of the setback, I feel. Um I would feel okay about looking at an alternative that had some encroachment. I do like the idea. I know in the past we've maybe had some, we've maintained a ten-foot buffer. Um. So I think that would be great if you could aim for something like that.
Um, yeah, I agree with a lot that's been said also. Three is obviously the tortured site. Um. It's difficult for me to really give you my opinion of these bits of wetlands since Shannon. Makes the decisions in this jurisdictional matter, hasn't really seen the final report. So I think that number one, she needs to see the final report. Number two, we need to know exactly what that amount of encroachment is in three. Is it ten thousand square feet? Is it fifteen hundred square feet? I think that's important to get to that. Number that you want to talk about as you look to to, you know, figure this out. So. Not having those two things makes this a little harder for me. I mean, I listen, I've sat up here and in planning long enough that. I know that we've destroyed great wetlands and I know we've saved crappy wetlands. I don't know what this is. I know this is not. Pristine wetlands here. I mean, I I know that even the piece that you're given is not, you know, there's just too much development around, even though there is animal. Use in this area. I I I get that. So I want to understand from the report exactly. You know, Shannon comes back and says, yeah, that, you know, that the ditch is not, you know, that's in the last fifteen years. So. If that goes away, that's not a big deal. That that's the kind of stuff I really want to understand. And then I think I can make a better. Um. I can make a better decision based on that kind of stuff. Um. Listen, the neighbor thing is a big deal on um five. I know you've already talked to the, you know, already have a good good relationship with Dell, but you know, you have to talk to the woods. You have to talk to. Um the, what's that neighborhood next to?
Timber Trail.
Timber, no, 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 next to five.
Five block.
Four o'clock subdivision. And then the the harder one is the Timber Trail subdivision. I appreciate you doing that, that, you know, torture road. I I I really did hope that that was going to come out better because I thought that would be a great solution. Um. But I I wouldn't even win that one if I told you you had to go that way anyway. And I do think that that definitely has some detrimental impacts. Um because of the way that that land runs, that would definitely have detrimental impacts also to the neighbors. So. Um I do want you to continue to meet with them. Um. I know that a lot of the the those lot that lot layout up there is based on the topography. So it's hard to look at this. Um on a on a two dimensional and and. Say that I agree with this because I don't. I don't know how these lots run. If it was me, I'd say I'd rather see. Some of these lots get a little bigger and some of the bigger ones get a little smaller, but I know that some of this stuff is done. Because of the way the the topography goes and that'll really in the end be up be more up to um the planning commission. I think seventy-five hundred square feet on a third of an acre while it may fit. Can be a little tight. So I want some um. Disturbance um envelopes. That sort of reflect what will really fit on these lots and, you know, honestly, lot one and lot two in particular are the ones that. I think if you combine those into one or you sort of spread, if you lost one lot in that first. Row to give some to a little bit of relief to the, you know, the next neighbor of having only one. Or two neighbors with lot nine, uh that might that might be a good good place to have a a concession. Um other than that, you know, I I agree with Kelly. I think this has been a decent process. You know, there. There is never anything that we do that everybody's like, man, that's just great. But to Jeffrey's point. The alternative, I I'm still glad that we're going down this road and I appreciate you and your staff doing this and. Mark and his staff um looking through, looking through this. So. All right. Thank you.
Your time.
Uh we're gonna take a quick five and then come back with our executive session for personnel matters and legal advice. Do we have a?
Yeah.
Script?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's do it because we uh our timeline is squeezing. Sorry.
The town council going to an executive session of section twenty-four, six, four, two, four, F I. CRS of the Colorado Vice, that might be a one. CRS of the Colorado Vice statutes. For personnel matter under section twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, E CRS. Purpose of matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations and or instructing negotiators. Specifically to discuss the expiration of the existing contract with the town attorney, terms of proposed reappointment. Roll call.
Mamula?
Yes.
Pro Tem Owen?
Yes.
Member Beckerman, Councilmember Bergeron?
Yes.
Member Carlton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sade?
Move the town council going to execs. I move that the town council go into executive session under twenty, section twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four, B. Colorado revised statutes relating to conferences with Glenn Porzac, Porzac Law. And the town attorney for purposes of receiving legal advice. Proposed development of the lower blue reservoir with Summit County. Roll call, please.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes.
Pro Tem Owen?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman? Councilmember Bergeron? Councilmember Carlton? Councilmember Rankin?
Yes.
Member Sade?
Yeah.
It's September twelfth, two thousand. Thanks. Time is now six fifty-six and the executive session is concluded. Participants in the executive session were the town council, Kirsten Crawford, Glenn Porzac, James Phelps. Shannon Haines and Rick Holman. Town council has discussed an executive session of personnel matter. Involving the town attorney, for the sake of transparency, the council has directed the town manager. Prepare a revised agreement with Ms. Crawford, which will be considered by the town council for approval on or before the October ten, twenty twenty-three council meeting. All right.
This probably wants to be, we should put this someplace safe.
Yeah, yeah.
Three minutes.
Doing dishes.
Right. Call to order, town council regular meeting for Tuesday, September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. It is seven P M. Roll call, please.
Kelly Owens?
Here.
Dick Carlton?
Here.
Jeffrey Bergeron? Carol Sade?
Here.
Jay Beckerman?
Present.
Todd Rankin?
Here.
Mayor Eric Mamula?
Yes. Uh we have approval of minutes for uh August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Any? Do you have anything to add? No, minutes for August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three stand as presented. Also, minutes for September first, twenty twenty-three. Any changes? Minutes for September first, twenty twenty-three stand as presented. Uh approval of the agenda?
No changes?
And this stands as approved. Communications council, we begin with public comment. These are non-agenda items only with a three-minute time limit. Uh if you want to speak, step up to the lectern, give us your name and your three minutes.
Who's first?
Yes, sir. Hey.
Three minutes on the clock. Thanks for giving me some time. My name is Mike Gumina. I'm a full-time resident here in Breckenridge. I happen to also be the president of the homeowners association of Breckenridge Mountain Village. I'm here today to uh represent that that group, that homeowners group. We would like to voice our objection and disappointment about the elimination of the blue bus route. We consider this to be a major reduction in service for our owners and our guests. As the blue route provided direct access to both Peak Nine and the Gondola. My understanding is our options now are to ride the trolley to the Gondola. Or to take the trolley to the ice rink and wait for a transfer for the brown bus to access Peak Nine. The trolley with the smaller capacity bus and the blue bus will operate at thirty-three percent less than what the blue bus did. And to which our observation was during the peak times, the blue bus was always full. So we have doubts whether we have enough capacity to handle the amount of movement of people along south end of French Street. We believe your estimate of ridership on the blue bus is underestimated. Our other options, of course, are to walk to the ice rink, which is four tenths of a mile. To walk to to Main Street through the poorly maintained trail by the residents in. Uh and or to walk all the way to Quicksilver, which is about seven tenths of a mile. Uh this puts our guests and our owners at significant risk because there's un um. Uh unmaintained trails that get you there and there's crosswalks that are not protected that get you to the ice rink as well. Of course, some people now are just gonna opt to drive uh to Peak Nine, which is gonna add to the uh. Traffic problems. So I think that should be a consideration as well. So assuming. The city is locked in to eliminating the blue route, which I hope you're not, but assuming you are. We believe you should consider running the brown route or at least the proposed new high demand express bus. Down French Street to the Jefferson Adams uh corner and come around and back up French Street towards the ice rink. Uh while this uh is an overlap of the trolley, it would provide direct ride from our neighborhood to Peak Nine. Provide adequate capacity for riders and minimize the safety issues of unprotected street crossings and unmaintained walkways. Thank you for your consideration.
Mike, thanks. Yep. Next. Yes, sir.
Ken Garger, uh I'm on the board for Timber Trail.
Hi, Ken.
How you guys doing? Okay, so I attended the earlier meeting and I listened to to Mr. Dudik and um. We're not, we're we're, I I don't think you're being given all the information. And I think you're only hearing what he wants you to hear on this because it it's a totally different viewpoint. Number one is that Timber Trail has no sidewalk. So everyone who accesses the ski trail by design by veil itself walks up the road. We're talking, we're not talking, I I heard the argument is that we shouldn't be objective to uh the traffic, normal traffic coming up. That's not what we're objecting to. We're objecting to twenty homes, each one taking three years to build. We're talking a hundred and fifty to two hundred vehicles a day, including semis. I watched it for the home across the street from me for three years. There are twenty cars a day parked up there. So we're not, and now, when do they come? They come in the morning. When do our children? Walk up the road and we're talking forty or fifty people a morning, walking up to the ski resorts right when the same people are coming up. The workers to build these houses. The next thing that he has not told you is that you you see the little deals with the little access, track A that we call it. That that's a done deal, that you can use that. That's not available. I said, number one is track A was designed specifically for the adjacent property, which was track C of which they developed. It was never meant to go across the easement because if you'll look at plat one and plat two. They define that easement. It's perpetual use as a ski easement, non-motorized vehicles. You can't use it for anything else. And and now he says, well, we just cut a road right through it. Well, you can after it works its way through the courts. But up until that point, you're not going to be able to. We met with Mike and it was. I don't want to say contentious, but but we said, look, Mike, if you take it around the uh. The maintenance facility. What he's pointing out i- i- is also factually incorrect. He pointed the worst possible way you could do it for the slope. But if you go around the other end of it, it joins into some roads that are already up there of which he intends to use already. So I just want the council to have the full picture that this is not an easy road. If he goes around. We're off to the races. You guys built, he, I'm, we're not arguing how many houses he builds. We're out of it. But if he, and and that's kind of like the win-win. As a businessman, man, all of you people are business people is be like. This are great negotiations. You do that and everything goes away. The city gets their money.
I'm sir.
Okay. Any anyway, that's that's the point.
Uh Ken, plat one and plat two, that's plat one and plat two of Timber Trail. Is that where that?
Yes, the original plat two. If you'll read that, it's very clear on the perpetual easements.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir.
Hey, everyone. Chris Vance here, uh local resident. I uh purchased one of the last pre-renovated historic homes on French Street last year. I currently house three locals there. And they're very happy, um pleased to share. Um and it makes me happy to bring locals to Breck to find affordable housing. I would like to restore my garage, which has the opportunity to house two more locals um in Breckenridge at zero cost to the town. Um and I've been going through that process for a year. Now, under the code, I'm required to build an A D U and any restorations for detached structures. Given the size of the garage, I'm building an A D U. There's no other use case for it. As a donor to the B O E C, I look forward to our housing B O E C staff there. I love the B O E C. I think they do incredible work. I'm in touch with their. Their staff and would love to house them there, a place where I can walk to town and walk to work. Um however, I've learned that you require for A D Us um to be deed restricted. Now, I have no issue um with fundamental language of that deed restriction. However, when I look at the history of Breck and the deed restriction language, it. It restricts entrepreneurs, spouses, volunteers, or retirees from living in Breckenridge. Now, ninety-nine out of a hundred people that will rent my garage will no doubt be local workers, local residents, or fabric of the community. But every now and then, as the history of Breckenridge shows, entrepreneurs will come here and fundamentally change the town. Now, I'm not going to invest half million dollars in my private property at zero expense of the town and save them thousands of dollars a year without needing a lease to locals incentive to do something that fundamentally disagrees with my philosophy on the future of Breck, which is that you need a diverse Breck. You need diversity in the people, in the fabric of the community. You need entrepreneurs coming here and finding housing here. So I'd love to at least talk with someone about restoring my garage, providing local housing at zero expense of the town that doesn't require language that restricts entrepreneurs from moving here, spouses, retirees, or volunteers for the indefinite future of my property. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. What do you talk to? Somebody follow up with him?
Yeah, I may have been pretty clear that, you know, we're not going to deviate. Now, if if there's some specific language that the council is willing to be a little flexible on as to who qualifies, but that it's got to be a deed restricted property. Now, we have, and we have enhanced our our definition of workforce over the years to make sure that we're not housing, you know, somebody that claims they're self-employed and they're, you know,
Right.
children's book author or something like that. But, and I think that, so if, you know, if we're willing to massage that a little bit on this one specific thing, but it needs to have a deed restriction on that that primarily requires local workers to live there. That's what we do. Otherwise, you know, you know, we, it gets built and sold down the road, and the new owner has different uses for it.
Right, okay. All right, anyone else this evening? No, with that public here, public communications to council is over. We go to the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. Do you don't want to read it?
You got it.
All right, whereas the town of Breckenridge takes pride in its diverse and vibrant community, recognizing the importance of honoring and celebrating the various cultures that contribute our community, contribute to our community, and whereas Hispanic Hispanic Heritage Month is observed annually in the United States from September fifteen to October fifteen, celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of individuals and families with roots in Spain, Mexico, Central America, and South America. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month provides an invaluable opportunity to reflect on the and honor those traditions, languages, arts, cuisine, and achievements that have enriched our mountain community. And whereas Breckenridge is home to many individuals of Hispanic and Latino descent who help shape our community through their hard work, creativity, leadership, and dedication. And whereas the observance of Hispanic Heritage Month fosters understanding, inclusivity, and unity among all residents of Breckenridge regardless of their cultural backgrounds, and whereas town of Breckenridge seeks to promote an inclusive and welcome environment, celebrates diversity and encourages understanding among all residents regardless of their background of heritage, and now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Eric Mamula, do hereby proclaim September fifteen through October fifteen as Hispanic Heritage Month. Call upon all Breckenridge residents to join me in celebrating cultural achievements and Latino community, fostering greater understanding and appreciation among our diverse population. Thank you. All right, we move on to continued business. We have a few second readings this evening. The first is the council, second reading, Councilman number thirty, series two thousand and twenty-three, bill for an ordinance to locally landmark historic property at one oh six South French Street. Mark.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The ordinance in front of you will locally landmark the Howe residence at one oh six South French Street. We've reviewed this application and it meets all the criteria, and the planning commission has made a finding of that. So you're for answering any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mark. Questions for staff?
Is it possible to combine the two landmarking?
Negative.
Same as last.
What happened last?
Any of the public wish to comment on this second reading this evening? The public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
A second reading, move we pass council bill number thirty, series two thousand and twenty-three, the title which has been read into the record. Look forward to the next motion, which is very similar.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? Roll call, please, Helen.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes, we have the second reading of council bill number thirty-one, series two thousand and twenty-three. This is a bill for an ordinance to locally landmark historic property at one twelve North French Street.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Once again, just described by the mayor, this will be a local landmarking and planning commission has determined that it meets the criteria for landmarking. Thank you, Mark. Any questions for staff?
Anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading this evening? No, with that, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion, Jeffrey?
On second reading, I move we pounce, pounce, we can't, we pass council bill number, and pounce on that because it's a, it's a damn good motion. Pass council bill number thirty-one, series two thousand and twenty-three, the title which has been read into the record.
There, do you get a second there, one?
Any further?
That was a, that was a pity second. That was outstanding. Roll call, please.
Yeah, Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right, we have the first reading of council bill number thirty-two, series two thousand and twenty-three, bill for an ordinance, amending policy three, pertaining density calculations for net zero energy buildings.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before each night for first reading is an update, an amendment to policy three regarding density and intensity. This will allow us to measure density in buildings that achieve net zero energy efficiency, so that we measure density from the midpoint of the insulation cavity to the exterior wall and exclude that portion from counting against density. The planning staff recommends that you pass this on first reading tonight, but I'm available for any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions for staff? Yeah, anybody in the public wish to comment on this first reading this evening? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, we pass council bill number thirty-two, series two thousand and twenty-three, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council? Roll call, please, Helen.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right, we have no resolutions this evening. We do have some planning matters. Are there any call-ups this evening?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to call up the one fourteen South Main Street redevelopment at one fourteen South Main Street, P L dash two zero two three dash zero zero seven seven based on policy twenty-four A and the building height.
Second. There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Mark?
Eric, so you have, you can obviously do this at your next meeting. You do need to set a date and a time for that call-up because it can be as far out as a hundred and twenty days. So, but staff will be ready if if you are next meeting. The only thing we haven't done is checked with the applicant to to see if they're available. Sometimes that happens that they they aren't, and then they request a continuance. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. So we do need to set a date and time tonight.
Rick?
October twenty-fourth would be better.
Okay.
We could do it then, second meeting in October?
Redo, so do we need to redo the motion or?
We have the latitude of setting that.
It was a, well, it was a call-up motion, but we didn't set a date on the call-up. No. No, we're going to go to the October twenty. Yeah. Okay. Friendly, so amend your, go ahead and amend your motion to setting the date to October.
Can I ask a question? Does you think that will create any undue hardship on the applicant by putting it out that long already?
I kind of doubt it, given the time of year, but Sarah, you agree? Yeah. Yeah.
Which one would you prefer?
Make a motion to, we'll do a motion to do a call-up on the twenty-fourth, as long as that is a agreed upon, mutually agreed upon date by the applicant, that that would be our preference as a town to hold that call-up hearing on October twenty-fourth at the regular meeting.
The tough motion to make.
This is his rookie season. Hundred thousand.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to call up planning case two zero two three dash zero zero seven seven, locate one fourteen South Main Street redevelopment for the date of October twenty-fourth or a mutually agree upon date there within the next nine, do you say ninety?
Twenty, twenty, you got plenty of time. Second, there's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All righty. Report of the town manager and staff.
So we've had a request by Mr. Dudik to see if the council is willing to do a special meeting so that we can continue our discussions. We have area four, parcel four, left to discuss, which is the East Peak Eight Hotel site. Because there's a lot of things that they were putting together, they cannot have information ready to go to for that to come back on the twenty-sixth. It's just their planning and however their programming for that site, which was a lot of what the council was looking for. We cannot do it the first meeting in October because of budget. Therefore, the, if we don't have a special meeting, we won't get to it until the second meeting in October, which, if that's a council's choice, so be it. If we want to continue the pace on this thing, then we've been asked if we would consider a special meeting, which either the mayor or myself can call the first week in October. And I know, I mean, Todd's out October anyways, and he has some ability to do some stuff virtually. Jeffrey may be gone part of that week. We were trying to look at Wednesday, the fourth in the morning if that would work for you or a majority of you, however, so.
Was there any way to make it just like the sixth, just to keep my marriage intact?
Well, that's, Eric, you're getting ready to leave on this seventh. I don't know, Friday morning, you could do it.
I could do it Friday, yeah.
And I'll know tonight, you know, when I see your face.
Others here.
I prefer the six, but I can make.
Six, two Friday morning? Jay, could you?
Yeah.
Eric, you can. Kelly, you could. Dick? He's looking. See what, I see what his itinerary is that day.
A sec, I just got to do some time conversion.
Conversion?
Three A M. Todd.
India? You don't have, I mean.
Just checking, might be.
People, if you can't make it.
I'll jump in if I can, but I got, I got a flight that day, so I don't, I think I'm probably out.
Okay.
I'm not worried. So what time would you want to do it?
Early.
Eight, eight thirty? We do eight thirty, so people get kids to school, those would be the slab.
We always still have them.
Missing there.
That's a sign that things.
In the morning?
All right, so we'll get an invite.
A special meeting scheduled for October, Friday, October sixth, okay?
Hey, can I get ahold of plat one and plat two of the Timber Trail?
Yeah.
Mark, okay, thank you.
At eight thirty here, we'll, we'll get that set up, eight thirty A M. Good soul, is that, what, did you have? Oh, have you gotten the, who's wants to go to the Perk Wine Dinner at Hurstville? Does anybody?
Again, I'm going to be out at ten. That's the eleventh?
Is.
Free liquor. I, yeah, yeah, I like.
You could trade in the wine for whiskey.
Oh, I'd like to, like to, yeah. Okay, yeah.
Hello, yeah.
I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't think so, but.
So we might have four.
Looks like.
Just Todd, you're out.
Yeah, he's in India. I'm out. I'm bummed that.
You're not at our table, correct?
I'll have to double check.
Okay.
Have his own table, it's more of like a lectern. Sister. Sister.
I'll probably, I'm going to head out of town for a little bit this weekend, so I'll have Shannon under, do a trial run.
Overfast, you really should be here. Because if anyone has a Lexa ladle hose, then it's him. That's true. So, yeah. Anything else from the manager's office? All right, cast M M C, we had an M M C meeting at the county and the school district talked for a lot of it.
It's good information.
It was good stuff. It was just general school district stuff about safety and, you know, how the schools are doing better according to the state than they, you know, they had three or four schools that are, that have increased their ranking, so that was good to hear.
And I think while the three, right, the three Rs of the reading right arithmetic, it was always important, they're realizing that that how and what we teach our kids and how we prepare them for the next one.
Well, the first thing would be that arithmetic spelt with an A. Oh, no, I went to Catholic school. I, you know, I mentioned to Tony that I I think it'd be great if the Summit School District would sort of take a leadership role in trying to advance this notion that college is not for everybody. I mean, I think you're starting to see nationwide that it's not like when we were young and you just, I mean, I just went to college because that's what was expected, but now, except it doesn't seem like the school districts are keeping up with it. You know, they still really push the I B program. They still really push college, but there's a lot of kids that don't choose that for their path anymore. And I think it'd be great if Summit School District led the way up here and looked at the whole trade school model, and there's so many other alternatives for kids these days. And they're, 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 they're starting to, they're toying with parts of it. They're offering some stuff at the, at the school, like welding and bike, you know, bike mechanic and some stuff like that, but I think there's still this overarching philosophy in the school district that college, the kids that are going to college are the ones we're taking care of. And I just, I said to Tony and Lisa who were there that I, it's time to break out of that because that is not the, that's not where the nation is headed anymore. So we had that discussion and, yeah, we did not talk about housing.
I think some of the leadership in at the high school is, is really working super hard at that. You know, they've now have a construction class. They have a.
Tony mentioned the construction class.
You know, like you said, welding, they've got ski tech, bike tech. Yeah, but I mean, they need to keep going.
We, you know, we talked about snowy peaks a little bit. Snowy peaks, there's still this talk out there amongst the kids, the the kids that go to snowy peaks are dummies, and that's just not the case anymore, too. So Tony's got some work to do. He knows it, which is, which is great. He, I think Tony's doing a great job. What else do we talk about? What did Blue River want to talk about? All right, open space. He had a site visit at the Lorium Trailhead. We can, they can.
He had a site visit at the Lorym Trailhead, we kind, they kind of spiffed that up a little bit this summer, and they wanted to kind of check it out before this snow flies. Staff is working on.
Do you guys want the trail at all?
No.
It's still not great.
Why, just.
It's just still all beat up from, oh, from the, from the cable.
No.
Okay.
But it's in the works, because they made a promise. Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll get Seth on it. Uh, staff's working on trail loops for next summer, mostly, you know, a lot of kind of hiking and family-friendly loops, some mountain bike loops, but kind of a, trying to figure out, you know, the, the folks that don't live here, that aren't acquainted with our system, and they, you know, this, these loops will help them kind of find the best best outdoor experience for their ability level and, and also for their desire and how much they want to put into it. Parking strategy, we talked about that, and a trailhead assessment. We're kind of working on that inventorying all our existing parking areas. Now, you're not the, not the big ones, you know, but the, the more satellite areas that are kind of a favorite for, you know, cross-country skiing and, and kind of mountain biking, but only, you know, for a, a shorter trip, not necessarily a whole day type adventure. Now Bobby was interested, it, it seems like, what happens a lot is we have a trail, and, and this is editorializing on my part. We have a, a trail that's a two-way trail, but it, you know, it descends on one direction, and we put features, and then there's an assumption that that trail is specifically for mountain biking and, and, and then a lot of the clamor is to make it one-way. And Bobby brought that up about Aspen Alley, Aspen Alley, this is going to be the time that a lot of people are going to be checking that out, just for the name and also for the, you know, for the Aspens. You know, that trail, you know, we pretty much did all we could, that's, that's not guilty of extra, you know, features that makes it more downhill appealing, but it is a kind of a fun trail to ride. Bobby was asking about the possibility of having a, an adjacent climbing trail to that, but the truth is, we don't, we don't own the land enough land, we don't have enough of a, of a.
Maybe we just make it uphill only.
Yeah, that would be, I'd love that. We don't have, that's the problem, we don't have enough property to kind of create another trail in that area. Yeah, so, and then the rest was, oh, and, and also that'd have to be NEPA. So, yeah, that's about it. And there again, the, the features and all, that was purely my editorializing. And the rest, I was spent an exact session, which.
Well, you can't talk about it.
No, no.
I think there just needs to be a bigger sign at the top, there's already one that says it's multi-directional, there just needs to be a bigger sign.
You know what, you are descending stop for all other uses, especially hikers, you know, that trail is usually popular with a, a visitors on foot traffic, you know, and, and so, yeah, I.
We also might learn from it, because I agree with your statement, and not put features on trails like that.
Yeah.
Because it does invite high-speed descents.
You know, and the same thing with, you know, I rode side door today, same thing with, uh, um, Slalom, you know, it just kind of gets that misnomer that this is, this is, oh, you know, a mountain bike trail and it's, and it's downhill.
Yeah.
You know?
Agreed.
Yep.
Anything else?
What are things with cucumber gulch and tow dally?
I, I can answer that.
That's not part of his job description.
Not anymore. No, he's, yeah, how, how are they going to keep him on the farm after he's seen Perry? We're going to, uh, kind of, there's been some other alternatives suggested, we're going to be looking at that. We had Tony, uh, Tony Boone come up from a dirt work, Dirt Labs, to kind of talk about some of the other possibilities. And I think we could just kind of reevaluate and think about it for, over the course of the winter, make a decision next summer, is, how'd I do? This has been a really good meeting for me. Yeah, so.
You, you've really brought it back since that disastrous motion.
Yeah.
Really recovered fine. All right, tourism.
We did have a meeting. Lucy wanted me to remind everyone, this is Oktoberfest weekend. We are doing a local food drive benefiting FERC on Friday from four to six-thirty, and if you bring five non-perishable food items, you get a free stein. So there you go, Jeffrey.
Where, where is the location of that?
Riverwalk Center.
Okay.
And, uh, local sponsors this year, Breck Brewery, Broken Compass and Talbot Cider. Going to have food and retails previous years. The Riverwalk Center is, is the location for stein sales, and then the entire Riverwalk will be open throughout Oktoberfest. And Lucy wanted to thank BCA for that. So, um, at our regular meeting, we talked some about goals for twenty-twenty-four. You know, talked about revenue goals, matching the talents at two to four percent increase. Want to continue being the industry, being an industry-leading destination stewardship organization, which is where about sixty percent, I think, of the BTO dollars go these days. Protect and enhance the brand, which we did a brand study. And, uh, some of the results of that, the, the one piece that troubled me a little was we're really only in the average area for friendly in the brand study, which is, uh, was kind of a decline in that area. And concerning, outdoor adventure is fun, casual for all, we scored very high, all of those things, so. Yeah, I think that was, that was pretty much it from the deal.
Thank you. Uh, history.
We're meeting tomorrow.
Creative arts. CML advisory board update.
We did have a meeting, so now that we're getting closer to the legislative cycle, we'll have board meetings about a month. So three major things came out, report, first proposition HH, CML decided to take an official opposed position because it unnecessarily constrained municipal and local decision-making, also would have a negative impact on a lot of municipal property tax revenues. Um, and just issues with the process and not being engaged from the beginning. I know it was a rush to get that on the ballot. Otherwise, every year, the board president has an initiative, and so it is civility. And I think it's a good reminder that I think we have a very good Feng Shui and respect among council ourselves, a great relationship with staff. But we should not ever take that for granted. Some other cities in Colorado are dealing with tough situations. So really fortunate, I know CML provides kind of candidate training, but they talked about stepping up and providing more materials for candidates to understand their role and transitioning from activist to sitting elected in that case, so they're working on a lot more. Yes, that's still months out, but they're going to develop those materials. And then land use, they're taking a very proactive approach, so I know we've gotten the updates from CAS. Margaret has been at the table that CML has convened because they want to be proactive with presenting legislation. That is not finalized yet, but in the next month or two, they're going to work on fully securing bill sponsors for that legislation and ironing things out. The gist of it will be to take the good from SB two thirteen, but also eliminate any sort of mandate on land use.
All right, here we go.
I know, it's ramping up.
The manager's list, somebody put out the question asking if any municipalities have come out in opposition or support for Prop HH? And I haven't seen any responses, so I don't think anybody's, from a local standpoint, has done anything on that yet.
And I don't know that I'd recommend that we do it because it doesn't really impact us, but just for awareness. The county?
I have not seen that.
And I think CCI, the county association, they're likely to oppose, yeah. And then the meeting on Thursday? Oh, there's a district meeting on Thursday, yes.
Is anybody, are you? We were, maybe, might be good in Silverthorne, right?
District of what?
CML is a district meeting, they're coming in and talking about, they're having a little meeting over in Silverthorne. From what, two of the times? Five to seven.
Part of our district.
That's a terrible.
Are those meetings, are they kind of windy or are they kind of concise?
I would enjoy it.
Crowd care?
There's free dinner.
Wait. Social equity?
The minutes, we're in there.
Mexican at here and mine. Uh, other matters?
I have a couple. One, I hope we can get on this, uh, civility or, or kind of a, every, you know, kind of convince a.
Why are you looking at Dick?
Because he just talked about it, about Lucy's, about, because he needs to be more collegial. But, you know, the BRC are rating only semi-friendly, I mean, that's, you know, I, I think that's, that's a, that's pretty much a I don't know, a signature feature is.
And the BTO is working hard on it with the one Breck training, so it's not like they're taking a passive role, like Lucy sees it as being very proactive.
Uh, the next thing is, I hope we can figure out this Blue Root thing. I, I, I feel these people's pain, and I've, I've heard that around, I mean, I don't know what we can, what the possibilities are, and I'd kind of trust Matt to kind of come up with something or give us some possibilities of, of alternatives. But yeah, I, I, I can see how people, it's giving them heartburn.
I talked to Matt, not to speak for you, Matt, but I mean, I think you're working on it, flexible and listening, so.
Yeah.
Any other matters?
Not for me.
Um, one out of our discussion, Eric, I, I, I would love to see us at some point in this, I added one during the housing meeting, but I, I'd, I'd love to see us have a work session, you know, an agenda item at a work session sometime in the future regarding redevelopment and, and anticipated really, really have staff help guide us through, are, are there any ordinances that we need to be looking at developing in anticipation of redevelopment? And, and trying to, to recognize and, and prevent unintended consequences of redevelopment. Because it's inevitable it's coming.
Yep.
And, you know, I think we, you know, whatever we can get done proactively is far better than reacting. So, uh, at some point, you know, I would love to see an agenda item during a work session on redevelopment.
Want to see you go through planning first, or like, do you want?
That'd be a good idea, Jay.
That's probably a really good idea, is have it go to planning, see what their ideas are, and then have it come to us.
All right.
I just.
Please.
It's not Town of Breck, but it's Upper Blue Residence, I've heard from, for about the Fairview Roundabout. And just being, we, we've talked about it before, and I've heard it been brought up, but I'd love to bring, shine a brighter light on it for anytime that we're chatting with the county or CDOT, that those crosswalks there on every side are just someone's, I hate to say it, someone, where'd I lose a life there? And I don't know if it's, um, you know, signs with like blinking, you know, you know, linking activated walk signs when pedestrians are in the neighborhood, but you have a lot of families that are in the shekel neighborhood and off Fairview, and a lot of bicyclists going down that, that path. I just, I, I know it's not ours, but whatever we can do with CDOT with the county to kind of put that. I think that we would have a lot of happy people that, you know, we, we've talked about how the Upper Blue Residence and Town of Breck Residence are one of the same, uh, to a certain extent, and I think that's protecting our own.
For clarity, you're talking out by the bunkhouse, BBC, that, that roundabout, yeah. Anything else? I have one thing, I missed my note I made on the CIP. I'd like to add lining the river. Lining the river between the dredge pond and where, there, there's a gap there between where it's lined and where it's not, and we're losing a bunch of water underground, so we need to get that done as quickly as possible, so I'd like to add that to the CIP.
Eric, I've, I've been told that the problem is under the dredge, is, is the dredge pond, that, that, that got disturbed over the years. Do, do we know that answer, James? Yeah, because we lose fish there all the time. I mean, Jackson always is bringing, dragging me out there to show me.
It's like the minute that thing leaves, man, it's.
Oh, yeah.
It dries, so.
But Jackson always told me that it's the dredge pond, that they did line it with a chemical, I think, long ago. And, um, that in the process of the dredge going in years ago, they disturbed it and poked holes in it, so.
Let's have Carol fix it.
Yep.
Or mayor.
Anything else for the good of the order? We are adjourned.
All right, good government.